All right. Thank you so much, Teresa. Welcome, everyone. This is a very special and quite long city council meeting. So thank you to my colleagues and staff for getting up on a Saturday morning and being here today. And I don't know how many community members we have joining us, but whether you're here today or not, we've had a lot of community input up to this point. And so your presence and your ideas are here, whether you were able to make it today or not. So I'm excited to move forward and have a discussion about our major city goals for the next budget cycle. And with that, I think I'll be handing it over to Summer, if I'm understanding correctly.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Harmon. Welcome. Today, I will share with you here in just a second, a picture of the agenda, how it's going to run today. And then I will be passing it over to just a second, make sure I'm sharing the right screen here. Okay. You all see the agenda on your screen? Perfection. All right. So we are going to, in just a minute here, I'm going to hand it over to City Manager Johnson, who will walk through a little bit of an introduction and purpose. And Ryan Betts will provide a little bit of context for us. Then they'll turn it back to me. I'm going to do a bit of a process outline for our day, how the day could work. And we have a couple paths we actually can take here today. So I'll share that with you. And then we will engage in some dialogue around the 2123 goals. Depending on the path you want to take for that, which I'll share with you, have an opportunity to have some great dialogue about that. And then we'll take public comment at 11 o'clock. We have planned in a break from 11:30 to noon. And then at noon, we'll come back to discuss the goals further and hopefully narrow down on those before we discuss next steps and adjourn for the day. That planned schedule is that we'll be wrapping up around 2 o'clock, although that's obviously fluid depending on the discussion here today. So I'm going to pass it over to Derek to kick us off with a little bit of introduction here.
Great. Thanks, Summer. Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We are excited to be here on a Saturday morning. And this is a big part of our professional lives in terms of how we orientate ourselves for the next couple of years and our work programs that really kickoff in earnest on July 1, 2021. I know that seems like a lifetime away, but I can tell you that the work that we do today and the goal statements and the outcomes that the council describes really begins and casts off a lot of work by all of the departments and your staff. As you know, it's been months in the making. We started the budget process months ago with a series of meetings and reports to the council on our financial position, on the status of current meta-city goal. We had a series of workshops. We had online surveys and multiple points for the community to give input, including, of course, our advisory bodies. And so today, the goal statements really work for the community and for your staff to really signal how to allocate our resources to their highest and best uses. We are fortunate to be in the position that we are through the council's leadership and through a lot of hard work. We've balanced a budget. And so we walk into the financial plan, I think, in a very good position. And as I mentioned previous this week, that balanced budget is one where we're going to have to be very focused and disciplined about how we're going to allocate funding for what the council wants to achieve over the next couple of years. We are looking forward to the conversation today. I would say that part of what staff gleaned from your discussion, from the crafting of the major city goals is the nuance and details and the intentions for what the council wants to achieve in the next couple of years. So we listen very intently. And I think today, we've designed a process to be a little fluid and to adjust to the fact that we're doing this online and perhaps a lot of the other ways we might be communicating when we were in person are not available in this virtual format. And so we've offered some adjustments. So thank you, Mayor. We look forward to hearing from you. And I'll stop talking now and I'll turn it back to Summer.
Thank you, Derek. Did you want to walk through these few slides in the introduction? I can share them on the screen.
Yeah, if you want to. I didn't know if we had switched gears because if the slide's on the screen, I'm not seeing it. So.
See it now?
Now, now I see it. Yes. Now I see it.
Okay, great.
So I think I just went through all of these points in detail and talked about the next step of staff budget preparation. We'll be back in that following today with strategic budget direction and the major city goal work programs in April of 2021. We've set up two hearings in June for the preliminary budget and the adopted budget. And that is the typical process that we normally follow. Next slide. I won't go into great detail about this. I spoke about this at length on Tuesday night. I think the overall point I want to make is just that focus and discipline will be our friend over the next couple of years. And we've got some ideas about how we can focus and provide results to the community and be resilient, responsive, and nimble. We look forward to those conversations. And I also just want to echo to the council that you've got an entire team behind you today of staff. And so if there are points of information that you need from any of the department heads, many of the deputy directors are also here. They're available to turn their videos on and then they can come in and answer any questions. So now with that, Summer, I'll turn it back to you.
Excellent. And Ryan, you want to pick up from here?
Absolutely. Good morning, Madam Mayor, City Council, Ryan Betts, Assistant to the City Manager. Happy Saturday morning. As Derek mentioned, we really started our community input and engagement back in the fall of 2020. We launched a community priority survey in November, which lasted about a month, month and a half. We saw almost 1,300 respondents from the community identify their top priorities, which equals about 64 hours of public comment. We've also received emails and letters from community groups and interested parties. And we actually pulled off a virtual community forum on January 14, which was well attended. It happened to have about 160 community members attend with breakout sessions that was facilitated by Summer. We've also received a number of recommendations from our advisory bodies. And then after the community forum, the next day, we launched our community forum survey, which took all the input received on the 14th and put that in an online survey. That closed on January 25. We received about 630 respondents to that. And I'll go a little bit more detail in the next couple of slides. But the idea really is following very similar processes in the past. All that input and then engagement really assists the council in developing their candidate goals. And Summer will go through that later on the workshop. And again, today, all those, all that input going into the council, candidate goals really helps form our major city goals, which is the purpose of today. Next slide. Before use the chart from the survey that was done again in the fall. So this is the community priority survey. Again, we had almost 1,300 respondents. That equates to about 64 hours of public comment. It's important to note, though, that this is not a statistically valid or statistically representative survey for the community. But it is an important touch point and the one that we've used in the past to help inform the council what the top priorities are from the community. So again, it's not statistically relevant, but it is a really good touch point. And it really gives some insight on what those community members identify as their top priority. As you can see, and hopefully the font is not too small, but it ranges from homelessness, which was the top receiver of those respondents, all the way to, and I'll move my screen just for a second so everyone can see, to sustainable and multimodal transportation. Next slide. This is the survey that was done immediately after the community forum. We actually incorporated dots in a virtual setting for this survey. So we were very excited to offer that opportunity to the community. This ran from January 15 to January 25. We received about 634 respondents, which equals around 32 hours of public comment. As you can see, there's a little bit of a difference between the survey results from the fall to the survey results from this one in January. But again, it's a good touch point just to see for the council what those top priorities are for the community. Next slide. And just a quick context and definition for the major city goals to help council formulate those today. Major city goals are identified as the most important, highest priority goals for the city to accomplish for the next two years. And as such, resources to accomplish them should be provided and included in the 2123 financial plan. And with that, I'll hand it over to Summer.
Thank you, Ryan. So I wanted to, I wanted to open up this, this next piece here with that great context setting, where we've been and a bit of the intention of the day. I don't know about you all, but when I woke up this morning, it was different than a normal workday. Right? My family was all home and enjoying breakfast and relaxing. And when I was getting ready to head in to work, they said, where are you going on a Saturday? And I said, how do I explain this to a 10 and a 12-year-old? And I said, well, you know what? I get to go help a city plan its future today. And they were very intrigued. What the heck does that mean? Especially my seventh grader who's in a civics class that is studying this type of thing. And so, you know, I really was walking them through how impressive of a process you all have been engaged in and how, what a privilege it is to live in a country and live in a state and you all to be living and governing in a city that really does take the time to engage its community in what it, what it wants to see, what we can plan for the future and where we can anticipate maybe some unknowns that could be coming. And I think that's pretty exciting that we get to do that here today as a, as a group and to take all of that input that has been provided. And as City Manager Derek Johnson had said a little bit earlier, there's this entire team behind this, this work here today to take what it is that you come up with today as being the path we need to take for the next two years, to then figure out how do we actually accomplish that? Right? How do we accomplish that with the resources that are, that are here to sort that out? Granted, this is a little different than your typical goal-setting workshop, right? If you were all in person and sitting nearby each other and would be able to engage in dialogue, maybe in a slightly different way. And so as such, we have to get creative, right? For how we tackle this kind of a challenge via a virtual platform like Zoom. And so we've really taken into account the past practices that have worked really well for the city of San Luis Obispo in identifying the goal statements and having really rich dialogue and have adapted some of those in order to make it effective here for today, for our session. So I'm going to be sharing that with you in just, in just a minute. The goal here is really, we ideally would be able to walk out of the session today with some high-level goal statements that really do provide the clarity and direction for city staff for what the outcomes need to be over the next two years, right? What those key priorities are and what those, what those outcomes would look like. And then over the course of the next couple of months, the city staff will be working on how do we actually accomplish that, right? What's the, what are the work programs and the how to the what that you're going to identify here today? So with that context, I would like to, before we dive into the process, I would love for all of us to get into a state of mind about what is really amazing about this city that you all live and work in. And so I'd love if you would humor me to kind of kick off our session today for each of our council members and mayor to share a specific story. We'll keep it brief, right? Because we have other work to get to, of course. But a, a specific story of when you have felt most proud to be associated with the city of San Luis Obispo. And this, you know, this question, you can take it however you'd like. It can be as a, as a resident of the city of San Luis Obispo. It could be in your current role on this council. It could be in a prior role. It could be 25 years ago and it could be, you know, yesterday, something that happened. But really a specific story that really is, that was a pride-filled moment for you related to being part of the city of San Luis Obispo. And we don't need to go in any particular order, but would love whoever would like to kick us off with that brief, yet specific story.
I'll go, Summer. Thank you. I think probably having the most ambitious carbon neutrality goal in the United States to me is a real point of pride. And it speaks to the power or of this whole community really persevering over many years of organizing around that particular issue and community members involved in the Climate Coalition, for example, and also having a really stellar staff that's committed to those goals. It's, to me, it's a perfect example of the perfect, of the coalescence of both electeds, the political will, the community will with the Climate Coalition and others. And then also our, our really stellar staff coming together to create something that I think we are hopefully all proud of.
Thank you. What a great example. Councilmember Christensen, it looked like you were volunteering.
Yes, my buzzer is going to go off in a minute. Yeah, I, I'm going to actually, you know, do three. One of them is exactly what Mayor Harmon just talked about. I was extremely proud to be part of the recognition that climate action and climate crisis is upon us and that we have to start doing way more than we have. And so that was fantastic. And the same thing goes with fiscal responsibility, being part of a council that finally did actually approve a plan to pay down our unfunded liabilities and face our economic situation squarely. Very, very difficult because as we've noticed, the community talks about it, but they don't show up at the meetings and talk about boring economic stuff. So that's hard. Very proud of that. And the last one is just a personal one that happened during the, during December. I took 10 days away from everything related to council. Just no email, no talking to anybody, no meetings, no nothing. And, and realize that what I felt was that I was in safe hands. I was in good hands, that our, our community takes care of each other. Our staff is out there working so hard on all our benefits and that there's a whole lot of caring, good people here that, that make me feel like I'm in safe hands. So those three things are probably the highlights for me recently.
That's great. Great examples. Councilmember Pease, I think you were raising your hand next.
Sure. When I think about this kind of favorite moments in San Luis Obispo as a resident, I think about concerts in the plaza in the summer. I just, I love being out there with a mix of people and the music and looking up at those trees. And it's just really a favorite. And what that says to me is that so much of what we do as a city is kind of help create that space for this community thing to happen, right? And so there's obviously a lot of volunteers. There's money involved. There's maintenance of space. There's just a whole bunch of things that have to come together to make something like that happen every Friday night all summer, except this year. So we'll miss. But then in that moment, it's just amazing.
Thank you. A great one. Councilmember Marks, and then we'll go to Stuart.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I'll start out with a very old memory when we first moved to San Luis, excuse me, San Luis Obispo in 1988. And I remember walking down the street and people were smiling and they were saying hi to me. Now, we had just moved down from the Bay Area. And I remember talking, looking at my husband and saying, why are they being so friendly? It's like, wow, what's this? It's not how you relate when you wait down, walk down the streets in Palo Alto. So, you know. And, and I discovered that there was a generalized sense of well-being and trust. And going back to what Councilmember Pease was talking about, community, that just made me realize that this was a fantastic, a fantastic community. In terms of, of my efforts on and off council, I'm very proud to have been part of the passionate community that wants to preserve and maintain open space. And I'm very proud of the city for having put so much time and energy and resources behind fleshing out our green belt and also contributing to other open space projects like Pismo Preserve, even though they're not right next to the city. I'm very proud of our city as open space advocates way before we understood how valuable it was to combat climate change. And then the third thing I'll just end with is that I was in terms of the city council, but also on the regional boards, being able to really be instrumental in acquiring the property for the homeless shelter for De Prado and also the RTA bus facility. That was a really highlight for, for me and the whole team that made it happen. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stuart.
I'm glad people have merged from just one because I couldn't really come up with just one. So I have to say that when I came here as a student to when I, when I came back as a professional, I still found one of the same things, which is the community was willing to jump in and help solve problems and wanted to expand and expand the services we have. And that meant efficiency, that meant keeping a balanced budget, that meant listening to the community. And when I look at COVID-19 and how the city has jumped in, we didn't just jump in for our city. We really jumped in to help the whole county and be a team player, as well as with our diversity, equity, inclusion task force. It was, we need to jump in and figure out how to really start to make an actual, real, long-lasting difference. And that means involving the whole county. So that was, that was a, a big change from what we've done in the past with, you know, city advisory boards, but it was what needed to happen to be able to move our city forward.
Thank you for that. I love, I love to start with this to set context because I think I didn't know what you all were going to say, right? You, you came up with that on the fly here. But I think it's interesting that some of the stories you shared are from decades ago and some are from very current reality. And if we look at our goal-setting work here today with a really an infinite mindset, meaning that people that came before us that were in these roles, that were providing community input, that were governing, sitting in your seats here today, had to think about those things and what, what the city needed to accomplish, right? Big picture, so that you all are able to enjoy that here now, right? Are able to experience those stories of, that, the concerts in the park, right? As an example, or feeling that community feel that you have here in this, in this town. And so how do we make sure that we keep that mindset in the conversation today, right? In the dialogue about what can we do to meet this point in time with the challenges that are currently you're facing? And meet those in a way that really set the context for the long term, right? What it is that you need to do long-term? And then what specifically can you all do in the next two years to get closer to that long-term vision? And so we can keep that in our minds today because I think we're going to have a really robust dialogue about where we have a lot of alignment actually on these goals and where we then need to focus the attention related to those. So we can set really clear direction for staff to do the amazing work that they do. So let me walk you through. Derek earlier had mentioned, we have kind of a path, different paths we can take here this morning. And so we've outlined a bit of a roadmap for two different ways that we can go. So again, just setting the context that we've had a lot of different mediums for community input at this point. And the survey and the information that both the surveys that Ryan spoke to, the community forum, the advisory body recommendations. We've taken all that, all of you took that information in order to outline some goals, right? So the five of you have outlined some goals and have put labels to those goals of themes that you think should be focused on. What we're going to share with you here in just a minute is we summarized those goals into a table and some specific, the specific verbiage that you listed for each of those candidate goals that you submitted. So in just a minute, Teresa, she hasn't already, is going to share a handout that has all of that information in it. And I want to walk you through two different paths we can take today to, to land on our major city goals. And we will definitely want to take a pause in just a minute to be able to give you time to acclimate yourself to the summary table and the candidate goals because there's a lot of information in there. But once we do that, there's two different paths we can take. We're going to take the, the top path here first. I'll walk you through that and then we'll, we'll go down to the, another alternate. So the first path is that we can, I can introduce to you, after you've reviewed the file, the candidate goals and some details of those goals. And I'll show you in just a minute, a sample of what that might look like. Once we do that, we can engage in a prioritization exercise, which is similar to what you've engaged in in the past, and rank those that we get a top three to five goals that you are aligned on. And then at that point, we can refine those goals, articulate what the outcomes are, and ultimately land on the three to five major city goals. The alternate path is that first, without necessarily, you get, you first you get, take some time to look at the table and look at the candidate goals. But then we would dive right into, let's wordsmith from there, right? So you would do some work collectively. I would facilitate, but collectively, we'd be starting to develop that list. Again, at that point, you can engage in a prioritization exercise. I have taken the, taken the, the time to analyze where there is some agreement and alignment on the goals. And I have a sample of, of goal statements to share with you. If that is a nice starter set, on either of the paths, I can share those with you. And then ultimately, again, to refine those and to land on the three or five major city goals here today. In either of these paths, the prioritization exercise is optional. So you may find, as you have an opportunity to review the goals, you may find we already have quite a bit of alignment and that prioritization may not actually be necessary. But we are prepared to go that path if that, if we choose, that that's something that's necessary to do. I'd like to share with you what the prioritization exercise looks like so that you have a sense of what that, how that will play out. So this is a screenshot of what it would look like. The priorities are down the left, that goal topic. These are really the, it's not the full statement. It's the, it's the label that was given to the various candidate goals that were submitted. You would have a total of 25 points each to assign, allocate to these different goal topics. Now, you can, you can use those points however you'd like on a scale of zero to five. And the scale is at the bottom there. So you can assign zero points to some, one, two, three, four, five, up to a total of 25 points. We have this set up so that simultaneously, you could be allocating your points and we would be generating a total and an average. So that once you're complete, all of you are completed with the prioritization activity, we would be able to see where there's a clear cutoff of our top goals. And then we can engage in dialogue about how to refine the wording of those goals. So that's what the prioritization activity looks like. And then I want to give you, let me pause there for just a second to see if there's any questions. Yes.
This isn't exactly a question, but I just hope that everyone understands that we've just now gotten the memo that has a great deal of information in it. We haven't been given an opportunity to actually review the material.
Yes.
So this is, you know, as someone who likes to prepare and think about things, this is a bit of a splashdown. So I just hope that the public and everyone understands that the council has just now gotten these candidate goals and has not had a chance to review them.
Yes. Derek, would you like to comment on that?
Sure. Madam Mayor and Councilmember Marks, we had some discussions yesterday. Went around and around with our city attorney and ultimately determined that the most transparent way for us was to communicate them real time at the meeting so that there, there wasn't perhaps perception that there was consensus being created in advance of the meeting. And so that's the reason I think Summer's prepared today for us to take a long pause. I know that it will take some time, but for you to read this memo. And so we're happy to give you as much time as you need this morning to digest what was just given to you. And so we're happy to give you as much time as you need this morning to digest what was just given to you. So that's certainly the intention. I think Summer has integrated that in the facilitation plan today.
Absolutely. Councilmember Christensen.
Yeah, I appreciate this is kind of a little bit of a dance and I appreciate Councilmember Marx's comments. And they go to the same idea in the sense that, you know, if we were, for instance, to use this list of goal topics as, you know, our actual prioritization activity, well, I mean, economic recovery, economic resiliency, economic recovery within the boundaries of fiscal sustainability, are they all the same thing? I'm not going to be able to look at everybody's things and say, okay, this is, I mean, it isn't, it's kind of a false, this is a false list because it isn't, it doesn't, I mean, I know climate action probably is mine. And in climate action, I also include stuff about open space. The actual wording is broader. So it's a little problematic for me. I don't know what you, if you're just putting this up as an example and you'd actually have a different list we'd be prioritizing, but I'm a little, to me, it looks like we have a lot of agreement on the essence of three to five major goals. So I'm not really sure what we're prioritizing, you know, in the sense of, you know, are we prioritizing the individual council members' specific language that goes with these titles or, you know, what? So that's my confusion. And it kind of goes to the same idea of Jan, that it's helpful for me to think about this for a while rather than, and I mean like days, not half an hour. So I'm not really, I don't really care how we do it because to me, it looks like we've got a lot of consensus already. So it's going to be, the devil is going to be in the details, not in the overall prioritization. Because I think, again, I look at this and go, we're kind of essentially all on the same page. We just, we might have little details, how we mention it, you know, I put downtown vitality into my economic recovery. Somebody else may have put it, you know, separate, but whatever, I just, it's not, you know, yeah, that's all I'm going to say.
I think the next slide is actually going to help, I believe, with this. So I'd love to go to that. I do want to clarify that this is why we gave the two paths. Because knowing that this would likely be challenging to be prioritizing based upon just these labels because there is a decent amount of overlap. Of course, we are needing to plan for this while the goal statements are coming in. And so the refinement, I took the liberty, which I'll share with you here in just a minute, to share with you some of that consolidation that I've done to help, I think, advance the conversation. So it should be coming up here in just a second is a table. You see the table now that has the list? Okay, so this has the 15 that you just saw in the prioritization matrix. But then across the columns to the right show each of your initials with your, if you submitted a goal statement that had that label associated. So as an example, that diversity, equity and inclusion, four of the five of you listed that verbiage and a specific goal statement, which we'll say more about in a second. And then the second one, diversity, equity and inclusion, recreational, cultural, was another submission by Councilmember Marx. So when we look at this, and I've tried to organize it a bit for you, it appears that there's a lot of alignment related to diversity, equity and inclusion. And it would be a good use of time to get into the specifics of that, as you were mentioning, Councilmember Christensen, that that's where the energy might make sense to spend. That could likely be one major city goal with some clarification on what's in that discussed today. The second one really around climate action, there is language, when I read what is in the candidate goal statements, these line up very nicely. I think we have an opportunity to have some conversation around five, six and seven. So the submissions, some of you submitted housing, housing affordability separate from homelessness. Some of the candidate goal statements combined them. So I think that's an opportunity to have some conversation. Is that one major city goal, a third major city goal? Or is it actually a third and a fourth, potentially two different ones? And then the economics is what I'm calling it, kind of an economic theme, that there is several around, something around economic recovery, stability, resiliency. And in reading what was submitted related to the relocation of the economy, I think there's some similar, there's some overlap or alignment there as well. Which leaves us with then submissions that sustainable transportation, essential services, climate action and infrastructure and community repair that were individual goal statements that were submitted that are not necessarily fully aligned with the others or, you know, subsumed in some way by the others. So this could be a way to launch our conversation to say, does seem that we have some alignment. Let's have some dialogue about what's in these after we give you some time to read through the handout that you have there. And the path that we could take, which was the top path I was walking you through on that roadmap, would be then that I would, this is just a sample. I have slides prepared that would walk you through that theme. So for example, it could be that economics theme that we had quite a bit of alignment on. The slide then would have a reminder of what that 1921 goal looked like. So that you would have that top of mind right at your fingertips. And then a listing of the goal labels and the exact verbatim goal verbiage that you shared with the name at the end associated with that. So if it was Councilmember P's goal label and goal verbiage at the end of that verbatim statement, it would say P's. So that you'd know who that is associated with. And then this is the part that I just took the liberty as an objective third party to look at what you had submitted. And you can look at these if you'd like, or we can just totally skip them to suggest a draft goal theme and a draft goal statement using your language that was common within what you submitted. So the path we could take after we take a pause for you all to become more familiar with the handout, the top path would be where we would then walk through each of those, where we have alignment, each of those themes, walk through those, and then if there still is a need for a prioritization activity, we engage in that. We then finalize, refine the statements and end up with our final major city goals. Or after you take a break to read through that handout, we then can really develop those kind of more from scratch, which has been more traditionally the path that you've gone. And I was suggesting that that top path might make sense this time around because there is so much alignment in what was submitted. Yes, Councilmember P's.
Thank you. Personally, I feel like that top path would definitely help. I know that we struggle on the wordsmithing sometimes in the moment, so to have a head start on that. And Summer, I'm wondering in terms of, and it'll be good to go through the specific language of everybody's, I appreciate that you're going to give us that time to, you know, be able to process that. And then I'm wondering where it fits in some of the specific suggestions or agreements on work programs within those tasks. Because I feel like, because there's so much alignment on the themes, there's a risk of us all kind of putting too much, piling too much onto a staff expectation about what could fit into that theme. So whether it's, you know, the sustainable transportation and then how far does that go in terms of implementation of, you know, transit and bike lanes or, and the climate action, is it urban forestry or, you know what I mean? So kind of getting into that type of weed. So where does that conversation happen in this process? If that, yeah, where does that happen?
Absolutely. So I will, I'll jump in and say a little bit on this and it sounds like maybe Derek wants it. I just saw him come off mute, so I'm guessing he has a comment here as well. I do have that planned as part of the, as we go through the goal statements, that we could also outline tangible potential steps or potential tangible steps that could be taken so that we can identify that more. You know, the goal statement is really meant to be that what? And then the more specificity in the how that gets done is amazing direction, be able to provide to staff that clarity. And then over the next two months, that's when staff will take that to create those work programs, right? Taking into account that input. So you'll notice that in the, again, I took the liberty as an objective third party to try to tease those out. So in some of them, there were such awesome, specific ideas listed within the goal statements that I actually wrote a goal statement and then identified, hey, these look like potential steps that could be taken. Some of them didn't lend maybe as much to that, and so I didn't put that in, but we absolutely can be tracking those in the conversation today. Derek?
Yeah, I was just going to just add on to Summer's comments that a key place for that, and thanks for inviting that conversation. You'll see in the gray boxes on the right hand side, we've added the words articulate outcomes. That is kind of a new feature that we're hoping for so that at the end of two years, if we achieve the goal, what would it look like? And that was part of that exercise this morning is trying to put you in that mind frame. And so as we think two years from now, what that looks like with these goals and that we understand what that outcome is, and if there's specific pathways, i.e. tasks that you want us to take, we would really appreciate that. And I've told my staff, if council is, if that's something we think supports it, they should pipe in. If they think that doesn't, we should have a conversation. Or to your point earlier, if it's too much and that we can't achieve the outcome because there are too many items under it to say that as well. So thank you for calling that out.
Any other questions or comments at this point? Or are we, yes, Councilmember Stewart?
I was just going to say that I agree. I think the top path is definitely the better way to go. As far as the work plan aspect, I appreciate the articulating outcomes and what we would dream for that to look like. I also very much depend on staff to tell me what they can handle. So there is a bit of that as well. I'm expecting that accountability because I can tell you what I dream for it to look like, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that's logical in this moment or in two years for that matter. So I want to make sure that we're careful how we're driving that.
Thank you. Councilmember Marx?
Yeah, I agree the top path would be best. But I think besides the facilitator explaining the candidate goals and details that each of us should be given an opportunity to address our own goals that we have put forward.
Absolutely. Thank you for clarifying that. So when, if we go the top path, I will share the slide that just summarizes that. And then everybody would have an opportunity to articulate that further and clarify anything within it. Absolutely. Okay, so should we take a pause here and give you an opportunity to read the handout that has the table and the candidate goals outlined? And then when we come back from that, we can determine, it sounds like we're starting to align around the top path making sense. But I'd like you to have a chance to review the file before you fully agree to that. And then we can determine if that is the right path and then we'll get launched with that. Is 10 minutes enough for you to get acclimated to it? I know you really would love two days, but what is reasonable? Is 10 minutes, is 15 minutes, like what should we take as far as a break here to give you time to get acclimated to the, I think it's about a three page handout.
Why don't we start with 10 minutes, meet back in 10 minutes? And then if anyone is significantly interested in having more time, then we can potentially extend.
Sounds great. Okay, thumbs up. Excellent.
This pretty much, it's 12 minutes till 10. Does that work for you, Summer, then just to make it in 10?
That's great. So we'll come back at 10 a.m. and pick the path. All right, thank you. Welcome back. Do we need more time or are we feeling like you've had a chance to really review what's there? And we can start to launch into one of the paths?
I feel ready. I'm not sure.
I'm ready too.
I'm ready. Okay, great.
Can I just also make the comment? I'm just like so thrilled with this group of people. I mean, not a dud in the bunch in terms of those goals and interests. And I'm just so honored to be working with all of you. So thank you for that.
What a nice thing to say. Thank you, Councilmember P's.
Well said.
Yeah. Yeah, I wish you all could have seen them in advance because as I saw them, I thought, wow, we have such alignment here. This will be a really meaningful conversation here today to talk about where there's alignment and then what does that actually look like, right? What is the outcome you want to get to? So, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I'll also just mention that if you take all of our surveys and our input, you basically come up with those same goals. So I think that our work, you know, definitely took into account and reflects the main community concerns also. So that's reassuring.
That is.
I have a question, just because it's come up so much and I'm not exactly sure where it fits in terms, I don't know if it fits in this, even this goal setting process. But the conversation around policing specifically and police budgeting and funding. Derek, can I get just a sense of, you know, for people that, I know we have an upcoming agenda item about the police station specifically, but just about the general conversation around the budget, since this is the budget setting process, how do we, where does that fit into this conversation today?
So Madam Mayor, I guess I'd need to understand a little bit more what you mean in terms of, I guess, as you go through the goals and you look at the goal statements. I talked a little bit about what your budget capacity is and you have some budget capacity largely in the measure G area. You have some budget capacity limited in the, you know, just general fund. So if there's things you want to do different with the budget and particularly different department budgets, be careful. I need to understand what is the outcome that the council is trying to achieve?
Got it. So for example, a program like Kahoots, which I saw, I think Carlin has. And while I didn't specifically name that, I think, I'm guessing, I'll just say I'm in full support of that kind of thing. Does that then fall under a diversity, equity and inclusion goal?
I think that, or it could fall under homelessness, for example.
Because it's not necessarily specifically about equity necessarily, you know? So I guess I'm just, I just wanted to, I want to make sure that that's interwoven. And I guess I just want to better understand where that sort of falls.
Yeah, I think about the Venn diagram. I mean, I can imagine, you know, a DEI and homelessness that, for example, you know, expansion of funding for programs for homelessness could fall under both those, you know, enhance both equity and inclusion and address homelessness.
As opposed to, and this hasn't come up and I'm not suggesting it should, but as opposed to like a public safety or like a reimagining public safety kind of major city goal kind of attitude, we could be, yeah, okay, I just want to try to understand that from my own thinking. So thank you.
And I'm happy to talk, sorry, talk about at some point when the council is ready to talk about just the larger context. If we want to go and talk about policing, police budgets, I'm prepared to talk about some of that later today if the council, when that time comes up.
I would just like to say, oh, thank you. I think we all have tons of questions and I appreciate your willingness to dive in there, Mayor Harmon. But I would, I think it would be helpful if we had the chance to proceed with the process. And each of us, as we go through the goals that we have come up with, which are candidates, right? Not, none of them written in stone. And perhaps explain ourselves a little bit in that process. We may come to an understanding and find that some of our questions are answered or at least addressed. And then we can proceed from there. That's just my opinion. It would be helpful.
Thank you. So on the, I'm going to share the screen here because at this point, we'd like to select which path you'd like to proceed with. And for some reason, I just lost all. Yeah, for some reason I just lost all of your faces. So hoping that's going to come right back up. Um, there we go. So if you look at the, at the pads that we had here, um, before we took the, the break to talk through, uh, the summary table and candidate goals, or for you to have a chance to familiarize yourself with that, we were leaning towards the top path. So want to make sure we still are feeling that that's the path to go. Where we would begin, I would walk you through the slide deck that has the candidate goals listed. A reference, if there was a 1921 major city goal that was aligned to that. And we'd have an opportunity for council members to present their, um, goal statements. And then if you would like to see the sample or the draft that I created, if that would be helpful, we can do that. And then, and then begin finessing those. Is that the path we would like to take?
Yes, I think there's consensus.
Next one. Okay, great. So I put these in order, not really necessarily in a particular order. Um, but the first one that's, that's up here is around the theme of economics. And, uh, not like the fifth class you would take, but you know, the, uh, there are different elements of economic resilience, recovery, whatnot. Um, I outlined that there actually are three goals associated with this. There were two major city goals from the 1921 goal-setting process, both fiscal sustainability and responsibility, and downtown vitality. There were quite a few, um, pieces of language in the candidate goals you submitted that referenced downtown vitality. But the other element not to lose sight of is around the meta-goal that, as we all know, became quite relevant this year in particular. So I wanted you to have all three of these in front of you, um, so you can refer to that language if it's helpful. And then, um, what's animating now is the verbatim submissions, candidate goal submissions that you each made. Again, in no particular order here. Um, and it has, so is that first example, economic resilience with the goal statement. And that was submitted by Councilmember Pease. So that's the way just to acclimate yourself to what's on the slide here. And these are exactly what you should have in the handouts that you've just been reviewing.
Summer, can I just clarify, it, it might have been a typo on my behalf, uh, uh, my mistake. But in, under my relocation of the economy, that's supposed to be PLA, um, local workforce.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh goodness. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Just wanted to clarify what that was intending to be.
I was wondering what a PLA was.
I just made it up. PLA, citywide PLA workforce policy is what I'm trying to indicate there.
Great. And DT is downtown?
Correct.
Downtown local business programs. Okay, great. Thank you. So, um, what we, what we have as far as our process goes is would, um, love to engage in conversation about, uh, if anyone would like to share their thinking around these. And, um, also happy to share when you are ready or would like to see a draft statement that I created. You'd like to get a flavor for that because that could be a starting point. And then, um, you could come back to this with more detail. The process, since we are in a virtual setting, is that, um, our, our faithful city clerk Teresa has a word document that she'll be able to pull up on the screen so that we can live, she can live be taking notes and editing the statements so that we can be landing on something that everyone can see that live, real time. So would you, would you like to see just as a sample, the draft statement, Councilmember Christensen?
No, I was not gonna, I don't care. I was not, I was raising my hand, brought something else, so.
Okay.
I think it'd be helpful to see the draft statement just so we can have that starting point and then circle back to maybe even just go down the list and take turns to see who wants to say something more.
Perfect. All right. So I'll just go to the next slide and then we can come right on back here. Again, this was my third-party perspective on a draft. That the label could be economic recovery and resiliency seemed to encompass a lot of what was in those different statements or the labels. And then a potential statement could be in collaboration with local partners. Continue the efforts to support economic recovery for all from the COVID pandemic and support a thriving local economy by supporting local businesses, promoting downtown vitality, practicing fiscal responsibility, paying down unfunded pension liabilities and investing in critical infrastructure. So that was an effort to capture, uh, the alignment that seemed to be at play in those various candidate goal statements. So if I go back to the.
Question, what are you calling that? What is the name of that draft?
Economic recovery and resiliency.
Okay. If you could.
So on the.
If you could include that, if you could include that label.
It's on the left-hand side there, Jen.
Oh, sorry. I wasn't looking at the left-hand side. Thank you, Carlin. All right.
That's okay. And it would be, thank you for clarifying that, Councilmember Marks. So when the goal statement would be written, it would say similar to what we've had in the past. Economic recovery and resiliency, colon, and then the language of the goal statement. So I will go back to the previous slide. And, um, if, if anyone would like to speak to the candidate goal statement that they've listed. And then as we do that, um, Teresa will be taking some notes on the, um, language that you're coming up with. Councilmember Christensen?
Yeah, I usually speak first, but I won't do it every time. Um, it looks like we have a lot of, of course, agreement that we need to be focusing on economic recovery uh, after COVID or during the next two years. I think it's, you know, that's definitely not something that'll go on forever, but for the next two years, that's going to be it. I noticed that at least four of us included the word downtown vitality and downtown focused, uh, efforts. And I think that, um, that, that's why I don't support it as a separate major city goal. I think it fits extremely well within this, uh, this description. For me personally, I liked, I wanted to mention the cultural recovery parts because those are places, those are places that are not only vital to our community and our downtown, but also places where we have not seen a lot of help at the federal and state level. So I think it's really key, um, in terms of economic recovery that we focus on that sector specifically. That's why I mentioned it. And, um, I personally want to see the word responsibility in there, um, and sustainability. Uh, not just recovery and resiliency, but, um, but that, that feeling of being sensible. Um, and, um, so I probably like, like maybe my wording, but the title, economic stability, recovery, resiliency and fiscal sustainability. I like Jan's title. So that, that's what I'll say.
Hey, so making, please, Jen, or Councilmember Marks?
Uh, yeah, well, um, I agree with everything that Carlin said. I put cultural recovery rather than as economic, the economic angle. I put it, um, we'll talk about this later, under, um, diversity, equity and inclusion. Um, recreational and cultural. And I think, uh, we've seen with, uh, some of, uh, Mayor Harmon's, uh, goals that coming up as well. So I think that's where exactly to plug that in, I don't know. Um, but I wanted to say that my inclusion of, uh, energy and grid independence, preparing for an all-electric future could well go someplace else. I just wanted to put it someplace, so I put it in there. Uh, to me, it's part of economic stability recovery because as the COVID has shown us, we are also dependent on the internet and on the grid. And, um, so I'm willing to go with, uh, leaving that out of the economic stability recovery, uh, goal. If it doesn't belong there, but I, I would like to see it end up somewhere. So, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe.
Councilmembers?
Sorry. I can't see everyone. I'm sorry. And, oh, well, wait, I was just going to piggyback on what Councilmember Marks said. Go ahead with whoever was next.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. Um, I definitely agree, uh, with Councilmember Christensen around the responsibility included. Um, as far as fiscal responsibility, I think that's very important. Um, I am curious whether it's part of this or separate. Um, we do focus on downtown vitality because obviously that was our current goals. But how does this include the rest of the businesses in, um, Slow? So I think we have to kind of reconsider how we state that. Um, that would just be my personal thought, if we were going to include in this, you know, local business recovery and maybe downtown separate as a potential option. I would love to hear, I think I understand what you mean, but I'd love to hear both from, um, Councilmembers Marks and Christensen, what you mean by cultural recovery.
Well, I did put support economic recovery for all. So that's, it, just so you just addressed the first part of your statement because it definitely has to include all. But I, I felt like, um, I wanted to, you know, specifically mention the fiscal sustainability part of it. And then culture recovery, I mean, things like the artists, the performers, slow theater, um, all, all of the people who, and, and businesses, you know, galleries, all the stuff, the, the, the folks that add to our cultural lives, uh, performers, art, you know? Any kind of artist performer, that kind of person, that kind of business, that kind of, uh, you know, endeavor in our community, uh, really focusing on, on those people and those activities because they have not received specific, um, federal or state help. And so I think that we as a city, you know, we've done some of that, you know, street art and all those kinds of things. And that's, that's what I mean by economic, uh, cultural recovery.
Thank you.
Councilmember Marks, did you have a response to that?
Uh, yeah, I just, I included that as part of, um, DEI recreational and cultural as a goal. Because, um, and we'll get to this later, but to me, DEI has a wider scope than only what was reported in the task force, although that's an important and crucial, uh, aspect. And so I'm putting, I, I like the idea of exploring a multicultural center, although I didn't put it in there. But, um, uh, to me, the, the, um, uh, recreational, cultural address, mental health issues and community health issues, they all have an economic, uh, impact. But, so I guess the question is, uh, if, if we all agree, where can we fit that in without making, um, a dozen major city goals? Right? So I'm open to wherever it should, it should fall, but I do think it's important.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor Harmon?
Thank you. Um, I think that there's a huge opportunity to highlight the work that we've already done and that are continuing to do in terms of our leadership on climate action and all the interrelated pieces of that that, um, Councilmember Marks mentions here, and I think we're all on board with, um, including, uh, the anaerobic digester and all kinds of other real, like, national leadership pieces to that puzzle that we have. And I don't feel like we've really maximized the opportunity to, um, and I have this listed, I saw, you know, it's somewhere else. You don't have it here, but I do think it's an essential part of reimagining and revitalizing what we are talking about when we're talking about economic recovery and stability, especially from a higher wage earning type of perspective, to put more resources into partnering with the chamber perhaps. Um, and having like a public relations, um, element to that work that gets the word out um, in terms of our leadership here on this issue with the intention of inviting more innovative, green tech types of, um, entrepreneurial businesses here. Um, I, I think that that is happening to some extent, but that we could really amplify that opportunity by, by amplifying our message. And I've had some really great conversations with chamber leadership about this. And they agree that this is, um, you know, we've been sort of a little bit hiding our light under a bushel sort of thing. Um, and that we could do more to amplify that, to create, um, you know, have St. Louis Public be known as, as a or the innovation sort of green tech hub. So I feel like that, I'd love to see an effort, um, included in, in, uh, under this piece here that amplifies that.
Okay. This is it. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, but in terms of what else I wrote down here, um, uh, this idea of relocation, I think is really important. We saw with COVID, but it, but if the problems predate that, the issues around supply chains and things like that. Um, if we can get, you know, more support of, of, um, more meaningful local businesses too, with, with real, um, higher wage earning potential for folks. Um, and so that's why I also included, uh, and again, this is more, I guess, of a detail as opposed to an overarching theme. But local procurement, I think, is another unexplored opportunity that would, um, create and support some, um, more higher wage earning types of local businesses here. Um, and having a local workforce policy, as I say here, project labor agreement. Citywide over a certain amount, um, projects of a certain amount would automatically have project labor agreements and therefore also supporting local workers and, and, and things like that. Um, and just to explain here too, I, uh, the city of Berkeley has, um, a, a small, but still, uh, um, uh, resources dedicated to helping with the transition of, um, uh, sole proprietorship to co-ops, which is really important, um, with a lot of the, what's called the silver tsunami, a lot of people retiring. Um, if we could help those businesses transition into co-ops, then there again, people would have, um, more, um, hopefully more access to higher wages, but also more meaning-making in terms of their relationship to their working life. Um, and then the elimination to small-scale entrepreneurship. So anything we can do to hyper-localize, like at the neighborhood level, um, entrepreneurship, I think, um, would also be important. And especially since we're in a moment of, a lot of the older ways, um, are breaking down and, and not as useful as they once were. I think if we can be, um, imaginative, um, in that, which I think is also why, uh, supporting the cultural piece of our community is so crucial, that imagination is key to a lot of problem solving. So I'm glad to hear my colleagues bringing up that piece as well.
Thank you. I did get a, a request that it might be helpful since you have this, um, in the handout. You have this documentation in the handout, so you can see the candidate goals. Would it be helpful to have the draft goal statement listed up instead? So I would put this one up there so we can start kind of the wordsmithing element of this.
I thought we were, I thought the intention in this moment was for each of us to kind of go around and explain a little bit what we were intending, but maybe I misunderstood. I thought that's what we.
You are absolutely. And I just had gotten in the chat a request that it might be helpful to have this up on the screen.
Okay, sure, yeah, whatever. Completely fine.
Okay, Councilmember Christensen?
I, I don't know if, uh, I don't, I think Councilmember Pease hasn't spoken. I don't know if she wants to. And then I thought I'd make a comment.
Uh, sure, I'll just briefly say, um, you know, I, I, I support the inclusion of the additional language in terms of, um, financial responsibility or sustainability, or however we want to do that. I, I also, I know it's potentially a big work effort, so just, um, to understand, uh, uh, community workforce agreements or larger scale, um, local projects, kind of the localization piece of that, whether it not needs to be in this, the wording of this goal or as we, you know, kind of further down list kind of bullet points of other things that we would like to, if possible, incorporate. So childcare, I know we've all talked about and is a part of, uh, economic resilience. I kind of have on my, you know, um, bullet points underneath the draft. So, um, but otherwise I'm, uh, supportive of the, the conversation that we're having, having.
I, I have a question. Are we going to wordsmith this particular potential goal? Or are we going to run through the whole thing and then go back and do the wordsmithing? So I'm a little uncertain about where we're going.
I think we should wordsmith a little bit each one while we have it in our minds.
Okay, that's fine with me. I just want to know what the heck is going on, okay?
Yeah, yeah, that, that was the thought, Councilmember Marks, is that we would. Yeah, that that was the thought. Councilmember Marks is that we would do some wordsmithing here. And to your point that there may be spots where certain elements fit in here, or they might fit in somewhere else, that we can always circle back to say, hey, that didn't make it there, where might it fit? So we can try to get that alignment. And I think to echo what Councilmember Pease was saying, we want to get kind of an overall goal theme, overall goal statement, and then we can articulate what some of those how we would reach that outcome in in more of like a bulleted list. So we have some direction for what some of those activities might look like, that staff can figure out how we work those into a work program as much as possible.
Yeah, well, I just like, I just like to, excuse me, just say that the word local appears twice in this draft. And I think that what Mayor Harmon has brought up is is important to consider, but it would be more like on the outcome side as opposed to being specifically called out in the major city goal.
Thank you. Councilmember Christiansen.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to say, first of all, that, you know, one of the hardest parts of major city goals is is the actual fact that all of the goals are all related to each other, you know? So you have economic recovery, and part of that is, you know, doing the right thing on climate action. And it also means infrastructure and housing and diversity, equity and inclusion. So when I did my goals, I tried to come up with major city goals that kind of focus on that one thing. And then, you know, the others, like, you know, my climate action goal, of course, will be related to my economic recovery goal and vice versa, and the DEI goal and vice versa, but trying to remember that they, yes, they're all related, but we can't each actually say in each goal, all of all of the things. So there are some of that and some of the in some of the goal language. I noticed that there's a whole bunch of different things lumped in together. So I appreciate your coming up with these drafts that kind of try to separate them out a little bit and focus them a little more. And I I agree that a lot of Mayor Harmon's ideas, while interesting ideas, are really more like work programs and outcomes and not goals. I'll just kind of say that. As far as this draft goal goes, I think it's nice, it's good to like the collaboration with local partners is in addition and recognizes that some of our efforts are going to have to be regional, regional and with partners, like the county or private partnerships. I like, it has to have economic recovery for all. I think that's the important piece there. I think it's we all, four of us did mention the words actual downtown vitality, so I think that's important to keep in there. We like the fiscal responsibility. I like concluding the pension liabilities wording, continuing, it's going to be putting that in front of the public for the next 20 years is going to be key. And investment in local critical infrastructure is fine. The only piece I would like to specifically keep in or add is is the cultural piece, because again, the arts have tended to be ignored. And I think it's really important on the diversity and inclusion side of it, but also just in general, our arts are going to need some specific city focus over these next two years. And I I would like to put that in there, get that in there some somewhere. Other than that, I think it's 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 on its way.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Pease and then Councilmember Marks.
I wonder if we should bring up the word document, because I think we're pretty close. I think if we add in by supporting local businesses, promoting downtown vitality, supporting arts and culture, you know, that that would kind of knock that one off. And then there was also kind of like an extra word in supporting the efforts or something like that, so.
Yeah. I was just going to suggest that we might be ready for that. Teresa, do you have the word document that you could pull up and share screen? Excellent. She's already been editing. So it looks like we have the incorporation of potentially stability and fiscal sustainability, and then adding in a piece around the supporting arts and cultural activities. The intention here, and then and then Councilmember Marks will come back to you. The intention of having that local wording twice really was in that first clause in collaboration with local partners was intended to say this is not something the city does solo. This is something as many of you have talked about, right, requires other agencies, requires the chamber as an example, right? So other local partners being in this. And then the second use of local is really meant to incorporate what Councilmember Stewart was sharing, that it's not just about downtown businesses, it's actually supporting all local businesses. And then promoting downtown vitality is a is an additional element to this.
I don't know. Summer, can I just finish my couple of comments before? And then I will, that's okay. So I was thinking promoting downtown vitality, supporting arts and culture, rather than specific to activities, because I feel like that's more macro. And then just a little bit wordsmithy, but where at the that first sentence, continue the efforts to support. Well, let's just continue to support.
Okay, continue to support economic recovery.
And then I and I'm not, I'm not smitten with the title, so I'll leave that to others to condense. I feel like, you know, recovering resilience kind of hits it, but others, if you want to fold things in, seems like it seems like it's not going to be memorable, and we're going to shorten it to something. So let's shorten it to what we want it to be.
Okay, Councilmember Marks and then.
So it says supporting arts and cultural. I don't, I think she said.
Yeah, culture, culture.
Culture. Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Marks.
Yeah, just a minor thing, rather than promoting downtown vitality, I would I would suggest that we say including support of downtown vitality and arts and culture. Because promoting the downtown belongs to the downtown association. It's not really the role of the city. It's something we support, but it's not something that we do.
Okay, so Teresa, on that promoting downtown vitality, it becomes supporting downtown vitality and arts and culture. Is that what you said?
Yeah, if if people would agree, yes.
It's not just, it's not just downtown arts and culture. It's citywide arts and culture. So it's, you know.
That's fair, yes.
And, okay, so supporting downtown vitality and citywide arts and culture.
Something like that.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. So when we talked a while back at the community forum, we talked about having DEI and climate as the lens we look at for the entire budget. So I'm assuming in our major city goals, we're looking at that in the same way. So if that's the case, I think we mentioned, I think it was Mayor Harmon was mentioning earlier, and I think in Councilperson Marks's comments as well, there should be something around climate in here that we're missing. So I'm just throwing that out there. And I think I agree with Councilmember Pease. I think we can say economic recovery, resilience, and stability, sustainability would suffice for me.
Yes, I agree with that as far as title. I I think when you have things that are running through everything, I mean, I would like to see a separate climate action goal and a separate
You too.
goal also, so it kind of part of those goals is like to make sure we do incorporate everything through everything else, you know, rather than trying to, again, mash everything together all, you know, in each in each one. Some things we're going to go without saying because they're going to be said somewhere else and and put into a policy someplace else. That's just, I don't, I don't like to repeat everything in everyone.
Yeah, I definitely agree to have a separate DEI and climate action goal, definitely not looking at combining that. But again, if we're having a lens, I mean, if you're wearing rose colored glasses, everything is rose, right? So to have a little bit of the DEI and the climate in every single goal would then be matching what we said our intent was. So that's that's where I'm coming from.
Or if it if that language is included in both the separate DEI, which we haven't decided on, but I think we're all making an assumption we'll have on climate. Would be woven, but the language of that could be these will be woven into all of the work. It's written somewhere, right?
We have, we have equity and climate policies or our financial policies, so it's written, it's it's in there policy wise. I don't want to, I I like to keep our goals shorter.
No, I agree, and I think perhaps when this is presented to the public or finalized, we could have at the beginning some introductory language that states that the council has made a DEI and climate change to pervade all financial decisions as per our financial policies. That actually, we can put that at the top, and then we wouldn't have to keep repeating the same words in all of the goals.
That works for me.
Yeah, we had a little mission statement that's actually does, I think, say exactly.
It does. It's actually listed, we're going to see it in a minute, in the in the DEI.
I think we've, we decided to take the word of economic, we decided to take stability out of the title and just have it economic recovery, resiliency and sustainability. Is that what we decided?
That was put on the table.
So, so, yeah, I I would like to take the word stability and fiscal out. Because they're in, they're, well, they're inside, they're perfectly fine. Makes the titles, shorter titles are always better.
So we'd like, we'd like to keep sustainability. I know earlier we were talking about sustainability, responsibility. We do have a responsibility in the goal statement, but keeping sustainability, so it'd be economic recovery, resiliency and sustainability.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Me too, because responsibility is in the actual text of the goal.
So Teresa, we just need to remove that comma after economic. And I think supporting downtown vitality and citywide arts and culture, do we want to, we want to eliminate that comma after vitality? So how does this feel?
Yeah, we're not going to, we don't care that much about grammar, Summer. Clean that up later.
We'll do that.
Puzzles and things like that. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hey, if you're telling me to not wordsmith so much, we're in a good spot. I like that. So this would be the the goal statement, economic recovery, resiliency and sustainability. In collaboration with local partners, continue to support economic recovery for all from the COVID pandemic and support a thriving local economy by supporting local businesses, supporting downtown vitality and citywide arts and culture, practicing fiscal responsibility, paying down unfunded pension liabilities and investing in critical infrastructure.
I know we're not wordsmithing, but I just want to throw out, do we need the two supporting?
It's a lot of support. It's a lot of support.
We're saying we're supporting those three anyway, now that we took up promoting.
Yeah, just take out the extra one, supporting local businesses, downtown vitality and arts and culture. And then that actually works to not even need the citywide anymore.
Right.
No, I think we need to keep the citywide as per Carlin's.
But local businesses, downtown vitality, arts and culture, you know, it won't get associated with downtown vitality anymore. Or we could even switch it up by supporting local businesses, arts and culture and downtown vitality.
That's a good idea. All right, so so move.
Oh, that was so wordsmithy, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we are. So I think we're close though.
Maybe call it a working draft and let's move on, because otherwise we'll never get through.
There we go. So that citywide, that's right, yep, and downtown vitality, and then you can take out and citywide. There we go. Okay, so we feel good about this one? Oh, go ahead, Derek.
Can I just offer a suggestion and if, just for clarification on, do you want to say council in collaboration with regional and local partners? Because you recall there is both, there's both locals.
I consider regional local as opposed to, but, you know, whatever. This, it's, it's still, we, we're going to have to, there's still some stuff to do, but I'd rather move on.
Yeah, agree. Great. Okay, so we have about 18 minutes until we go to public comment. So can we launch into the next goal here?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to share screen again. Thank you, Teresa. And pull up the next goal theme. So our next goal theme is around, it's loading here. All right, the next theme is around diversity, equity and inclusion. This is Mayor Harmon, you were referencing that vision that was part of the city council financial plan for 1921. We listed it here, that it was the lens you all had agreed to look at everything through. So the city of San Luis Obispo is a dynamic community embracing its future while respecting its past with core values of stability, sustainability, diversity, inclusivity, regionalism, partnership and resiliency. Granted, this is not just specific to DEI, but we wanted to remind you that was part of that framing. There was not a specific 1921 goal specific to DEI. And then the, again, these are the verbatim candidate goals that you all submitted that are in the handout you received. Again, in no particular order here. Most of them, almost all of them reference DEI or diversity, equity and inclusion. There was the addition by Councilmember Marks of recreational and cultural as part of that, which started that conversation already here. And you'll notice, I'll just put up here for your pleasure, the draft that I created here, it felt like it lended to a label of diversity, equity and inclusion, seemed to be, there was some serious alignment there. But this top part, what I was suggesting is maybe the top is the draft goal statement. But there's very specific tangible steps that you all have outlined, those trying to incorporate without having the goal statement be, you know, a page long, but to incorporate the direction for staff on what some of those tangible steps might look like. So the draft here, in response to our commitment to making San Luis Obispo a more welcoming and inclusive city for all, develop programs and policies to support diversity, equity and inclusion, DEI initiatives, and continue to implement the recommendations of the DEI task force. And then some of those tangible steps outlined, some of which are referenced up above, you can see these were items that were outlined in your candidate goal statements. So the suggestion is not that the the tangible next steps would be listed as part of the goal statement, but to say that that would be clear direction provided to staff around how these might be able to be incorporated into the work work plans. So I will go back to this slide to see if anybody has comments they'd like to make before we launch into the more of the alignment on the wordsmithing element. Please, Councilmember Marks.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I spent all day yesterday talking to people over at Cal Poly and including the people in charge of their DEI program. And everyone agreed that DEI is definitely includes race, but it's not limited to race. And when we're talking about diversity, equity and inclusion, you know, we're also talking about disabled people, seniors, people of different capabilities. And so I, I wanted to just say, I think we need to have a wider scope of this goal in that the greatest good for the greatest number is a very important value that the city has always maintained. And also, the other thing I want to say is that continuing to implement the DEI recommendations is not accurate. What we did is receive and file a report. So we have not started implementing. I think with the launching of this major city goal, that is, that will be the beginning of implementing those recommendations, as well as other recommendations that come up.
Okay.
And I'm willing to let go of the cultural and recreational aspect of my goal, since it seems to have been included in the economic one, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Marks. Councilmember Christensen and then Stewart.
Um, I appreciate your comments, uh, Councilmembers Marks. I believe that yes, we need to be broad minded and remember that lots of people need, uh, city recognition and efforts made on their behalf to be inclusive. But having gone through our national examination of the issues around race specifically, I think it's absolutely crucial that we for, uh, focus our, what we know, our limited resources on specifically the DEI task force recommendations that did not, uh, that did include race, um, as well as LGBT plus issues. So I, I think that that's, uh, that is gonna be work for the future and certainly needs to be kept in mind as we do all the other things that we do, because we do a lot of stuff that is, uh, um, around this disabled or, uh, mental illness or whatever. But I think it's just super, super important to recognize the work that our community and our task force did this summer. Uh, and, and specifically spend our focus and resources over these, this next major city goal on the five essential, uh, recommendations, cause they were labeled essential. And then, uh, the other ones as we can, and, and as you probably can tell, I've picked the, if, if we only had limited resources and could only do one of the additional high impact opportunities, I picked the one I thought just to give staff or the community an idea of where my mind was. But, uh, that probably wouldn't go into a, a goal. That was just my work, my work, uh, program pick. But I do think it's important to specifically focus on DEI task force recommendations as they are stated.
So just to clarify, Councilmember Christensen, you're referencing that second line in your candidate goal was, you were just selecting one, uh, to give an example. You're on mute.
Yeah, what I said was, you know, continue to implement the recommendations of the DEI task force, including completing, no, that was Stewart. Uh, what I said was, mine's another long one. And, and explore the recommended additional high impact opportunities as resources allow. Because I, I just wanna be more realistic about what kind, you know, we talked about earlier, about just how much time and money we have. So I really wanted to get going on the five essential. And then I wanted to explore the rest of them. And of the rest of them, what I think is the most important and the most impactful is that one that I listed in full. And, and I agree, I re-agree with Councilmember Marks that we, is that we have not, we have not been, we haven't done, we haven't implemented them, we're not continuing, we're starting to. So although we've, we can, we're, we have done other things and we can continue to do those things. Anyway.
Got it. Thank you. Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. Um, sorry, there were so many things there. Um, so continue to implement, I, I, I understand, um, it's not necessarily the recommendations that we implemented. I said that incorrectly. I guess I also want to, we have started things at the city that have started to implement, um, movements on inclusion, equity and diversity. And so I, that's the, that's the efforts I wanna make sure we're, we're identifying that we're continuing. Um, whether it's, you know, the internal subcommittee, whether it is looking at job descriptions from human resources, whether it's the HR, human, uh, human relations commission changes that are already in process. So I, I kinda just wanted to make sure that we're identifying that we, we have taken some steps and wanna continue taking those steps and implement the recommendations of the DEI task force. So just wanted to kinda clarify that a little bit. Um, as far as the diversity of all different types, absolutely. Uh, the, the task force was tasked on something very specific. However, if there are aspects of the city that are being negatively affected by gender or people with differing abilities, et cetera, it's not as though we should be ignoring that. You know, the goal is to take oppression out of the system. So whatever that oppression exists, that's where we're taking it out. Um, or we're making changes hopefully to make it, make our, um, community more welcoming. Now ADA obviously has some work that we already do and would be just continuing on, for example. So I'm, I'm looking at how we say this, I think is gonna be very important to make sure that we, we don't lose the essence of what is not being addressed at this time versus what is being addressed at this time from laws or other, other rules that have come about.
Thank you. Councilmember Pease or Mayor Harmon, anything you'd like to highlight here before we look at the goal statement?
Um, I mean, I appreciate the conversation so far. I, this one, I feel a layer of, um, complexity in that I feel like what we've done so far has been really helpful in that it has centered the people that are directly experiencing these things in our community have given us this feedback. And so I think I feel a little bit, um, like really wanting to follow their lead as opposed to inserting a lot of my own, um, thoughts, if that makes sense, and on this specific goal. Um, so I, I feel good about kind of where we're at with it at this point.
Thank you. Councilmember Pease?
Uh, yeah, similar, I, I appreciate, um, some of the way that you set up the goal with kind of the overall intent. And then, you know, we'll kind of, and we can talk about more on, uh, the specific work programs, what we can, uh, fit in. I, I, I appreciate also just, you know, specific to the DEI, the charge of that task force, um, with the understanding that of, you know, of course welcoming and inclusive to all. But, um, this language makes sense to me.
Great, so I'm gonna stop sharing and ask Teresa to, uh, pull up that Word document. Go ahead, Councilmember Christensen.
I need that document back in front of me again.
Oh, that's actually what she's gonna bring up. It'll have.
She's gonna bring it up in Word, so we can.
In Word.
Wordsmith it.
And then we'll be able to do a little bit of wordsmithing on that. It does sound like we have alignment on the, on the label being diversity, equity and inclusion.
So my, my thought is just to going back to what, uh, Councilmember Vice Mayor Stewart said. Um, it would, the first sentence would be the same. And then the second sentence would be, with the second part, it would say, "In response to our commitment to making San Luis Obispo a more welcoming and inclusive city for all, continue to develop programs and policies to support diversity, equity, inclusion initiatives and implement the recommendations of the T, DEI task force." So.
Right.
You put the continue on the other part and then take out the continue on the, and then you've kind of got what we've said.
And also take out that to right there, Teresa.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And implement.
I'm not doing grammar, I'm just doing.
Uh, you had said as resources allow, you want to include that language as well, Councilmember Christensen?
Well, uh, you know, we could say something like, "And implement the five essential things of the DAI task force and other highly whatever as resources allow," if you wanted to get more complicated, but.
Or begin to, begin to implement recommendations, that gives us a little bit of legal room to consider.
I wanted to focus staff on the five essential, because I felt like that the task force felt that those were the five essential. Those, those might take up pretty much all we've got, I don't know. I mean, that's what maybe we need to have some input, but yeah, maybe Erica has something to say, I don't know.
Councilmember Stewart or Vice Mayor Stewart, I apologize.
Thank you, no problem. Um, I like the change. And another option would be the, "In response to our commitment to making a San Luis Obispo a more welcoming and inclusive city for all" and, and, and the recommendation or, and the task, DEI task force. It's kinda like, it's in a response to our desire to make ourselves a more welcoming city and in response to the DEI task force. So I mean, I don't want it to be and, and, but I'm just saying the point of it to be in response to, because we listened to the DEI task force and see the changes that need to be made. So that's where I would kinda make that change a little bit. And then I like the continue to develop, et cetera, um, how you've left it. I, I guess I, I'm challenged around the, as, as money allows, as finances allows or resources allows, isn't that our entire city? I mean, all of these goals are as what money allows. So why is this one gonna be limited versus the other ones? Seems really weird.
And you, well, you're, you're totally right. And I put that, and I remember making that same criticism on, uh, when I used to give, do, do wordsmithing for our previous goals. And I put that in more for, uh, public education, because th- those, those DEI task force recommendations are, you know, big, big, some of them are big and expensive. So I just wanted to just kind of put that little thought in there, but I'm happy to take that part out. I don't, I, I completely agree with you. We're not doing anything that's not economically feasible.
And I think, I think that goes back to that mission statement part that we were talking about. It would introduce these five is kind of sharing that as resources allows to be in there. I think that's really good for whether it's climate or DEI or housing, et cetera. Um, and I think in that first bullet, there's the advance, the DI task force's five essential recommendations. So if that would make people feel more comfortable, I would be comfortable saying advance the recommendations of DEI task force in the actual goal, because implement may infer completing. And there's certain things in there that are definitely not gonna be completed in two years. So, um, you know, and the begin seems to like, maybe we'll think about it. So I feel like advance might make that, um, and I don't mean the, that whole thing. I just mean in, instead of implement, put advance in the third sentence down.
Advance the recommendations of the task force.
Cause that's hopefully really making a difference and making some, some solid movement. But we may not necessarily be able to accomplish it all in two years.
Yes.
That'd hit raises in two years.
Right, that, that does feel like it, um, aligns nicely. And then I wanna go back to what you, you had started with, Vice Mayor Stewart, around, "Does that opening clause reference something about the DEI task force work?" So is it, "In response to our commitment to making San Luis Obispo a more welcoming and inclusive city for all and the work of the DEI task force, comma, continue to develop programs and policies, da, 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 da."
Yeah, basically. We can work that a little bit later, wordsmith that, I'm sure. But that would be.
Okay.
Good for me.
Okay.
What if it's.
Before we move to public.
About the, uh, follow, like the, the lead of the D, DEI task force in response to. And yeah, cause I feel like this is a little bit of an, an, an interesting relationship in that this is a goal and a work program that's actually not really led by the council directly or even the staff directly. I don't know if we wanna, I don't know, maybe that encapsulates it what we already have there. Or maybe it's not important to, to name.
Yeah, and I think that, uh, I, I, I understand your, uh, comment, Mayor Harmon, and I did think about that for a while. Uh, you know, we, we, we are the council and we're supposed to be the ones coming up with our goals and listening to our community. But I think, you know, we, we specifically task, our task force to give us recommendations for a potential major city goal. So in this case, you know, it wasn't, it isn't the same as some of our other, uh, task for, I mean, advisory bodies who generally give us that input. This, this, one of the main reasons that this task force was, uh, you know, put together was specifically to help us guide, uh, guide our way through this process. So in, in this situation, I think it, um, I, I think it fits okay. That wouldn't be necessarily true in other years and other situations, but here it is.
Okay, so does this feel, if we're right at, um, 11:01, we're, we're, uh, our agenda is to shift to public comment at this point. Do we feel okay to delete this as a draft? Um, go to public comment, take a break, and then we come back and, and reconvene around the, uh, couple other themes that we have? Okay, so I do wanna, I'm gonna turn this over to Teresa here in a, in just a second. But I do want to, um, just to, to frame this up. You know, we've had amazing, uh, community input throughout this process in advance of today as we, as we've highlighted a couple times, uh, in our workshop here today, through the community forum, through the various surveys that have been done, advisory body recommendations, the conversations on the daily that you all are participating in. And so today's, um, opportunity for public comment is really, um, to highlight any additional pieces. But it, but today's goal really is for the council to work through those, um, all of that input to get to these goals. So Teresa, I'll turn that over to you to, um.
Can I just add, uh, previous, in previous years when we've done this, which has been most years except for the last couple maybe, what we've said specifically in terms of public comment is only comment if you haven't already commented. And if you have commented and it's something new that we haven't gotten from you, then please comment. But we, we have gotten what we've gotten, we, we don't want a repeat of something we've already received, tempting as it might be, uh, because we really only do have half an hour. So we wanna make sure if there's anything new that we, that people haven't had an opportunity to say to us, that's what we're really looking for at this point. I'll be real blunt.
Thank you, Councilmember Christensen. Okay, Teresa?
Okay, our first speaker is Eric Viem.
Hi, Council, this is Eric Viem. Can you hear me? Okay, actually I have video. Hi. Uh, so I will, I will be, I will be brief. Uh, first of all, I, I just wanna thank you, thank the council, uh, the mayor and the staff. Like, we are so lucky as a city that this is, that these are, like, this, this is how we're doing our goal setting. And these are the priorities of our, our great community. And so I'm just, I feel really blessed for that. Uh, as you know, I'm Eric Viem, Chair of the Slow Climate Coalition. And I wanted to elevate, uh, your attention to a conversation that is happening here locally and across the state uh, that's relevant to our community's goals around, uh, climate leadership. Uh, and that's around something called Climate Safe California. And the, the principles, uh, of Climate Safe California are, are to accelerate fossil fuel, phase out, scale up nature-based sequestration, invest in community resiliency and fund climate action now and into the future. Uh, and doing so through a lens of just transition and climate justice. And, uh, just for your awareness, the Climate Coalition has, uh, is, is working with this community and others to, to grow a conversation around joining the Climate Safe California platform. And that we as an organization are, our, our goals for this year are to professionalize the organization, to level up our communications and to grow the impact of our programs so that we can be a partner with the city in achieving our, uh, ambitious climate goals. And so three, three asks for you to consider during this process and going forward. First is we have a, a new administration with Biden Harris that have laid out a, a, a very clear message around the priority, uh, of climate, uh, and equity in their platform. And so we should expect, uh, funds, uh, at the, from the state and federal level and need to prepare accordingly with staff and resources to be able to attract those state and federal funds. Uh, second is to please do continue to leverage, uh, the community resources, the Climate Coalition and others to multiply impact, and we are preparing ourselves to be good partners in that. And third is to create structures that will secure long-term leadership and funding for climate justice. So those are my comments. Thank you for your, your work. And I, I deeply appreciate, uh, just being a member of this community.
Okay, our next speaker is Kat Schroeder-Mora.
Can y'all hear me okay? Sorry about that. Okay, cool. Um, thank you for your time. Um, I just wanted to comment, uh, the, the comments before this public, this public's, um, comment section concerned me a little bit. Uh, if folks are repeating things, um, it's, it's likely because they're not feeling, um, heard yet. And additionally, I know y'all have gotten a lot of responses from the community, you've been talking about it this whole time. And I think that's really, really good. But I just want us to remember that like, only a certain section of the community has the capacity and like, um, privilege, I guess, to participate in those conversations. And it's y'all's job, you were elected to, um, take care of the entire community. And that includes houseless folks, that includes so many people who, you know, I know personally, who are struggling to pay their rent. Um, things like that and slow, and I, like, I'm just concerned about how much we've been talking about downtown vitality and how. and how, um, your surveys and communication from the community has, has gotten, has gotten that result of let's, let's do downtown vitality. But I'm concerned that, um, what's more important, like objectively, is making sure that folks have shelter, have food, have resources, are safe and healthy. So I just wanted to give my two cents there and, um, encourage y'all to use the power you have to do what's best for all of your community members, um, even though it would be really nice to put that money towards downtown vitality. Um, and that includes reducing the police budget and putting resources towards housing and things like that for your community members. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, our next speaker is Riley Delk.
Hi, uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I also stand with the demands of abolitionist action, Central Coast Slow, including divesting from police and investing in the community. And I see a specific possibility for this concept to be applied going forward, considering the possibility of a new, uh, police department. Instead of planning to expand, um, for the future, I encourage, um, everyone on the city council and throughout the city to explore the parts of policing that, um, could be replaced with community care, as Kat was mentioning, and to achieve public safety. This, in addition to retrofitting the current station, could make a new station unnecessary. And I think this is all important now before Slow continues to grow. And I see a lot of progress in, um, areas like the plan to make more walking and biking access, but, I think that's only part of like planning for the future. It has to be a broad spectrum, so new methods of, um, public safety could go beyond ways of responding to and deterring harm. And since most crime here and everywhere is property crime, I think this shows a need to address root causes, um, for everyone fulfilling basics needs like our unhoused communities. How they need hotel rooms to sleep, just to have a decent night and to not be threatened by arrest. And those working on the front lines, um, during this whole pandemic need rent, mortgage, and utility relief. Yeah, and I think these issues are essential to acknowledge as budget priorities. Thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Katie Rose.
Hello, can you hear me okay? Okay, awesome, thank you so much for allowing us to speak today. Um, my name's Katie Rose and I am a, I've been a resident of San Luis Obispo for a couple of years now. I'm also a, a student, but I have grown up on the Central Coast my whole life, um, from Ventura County originally. So I feel very connected to, um, the community here and, um, very part of nature. And I believe that everyone, humans, we're all nature. So, um, I also want to echo, um, the, uh, demands of abolitionist action of the Central Coast as well as other community organizations that are fighting for, um, houseless, uh, folks in particular. And just those that are struggling to, um, survive under this pandemic that is worsening the economic crisis, as you all know. And I believe that, um, in order to create a more just, sustainable world and a more diverse and inclusive one, we need to center, um, Black, Indigenous, and people of color primarily. And, um, I think there needs to be a greater emphasis on, um, protecting our houseless folks and providing housing. I believe everyone has a right to housing and basic survival cer- needs, which are not provided in this community from what I've seen. And it really upsets me to see, um, more and more, um, people struggle during this pandemic. And I just am upset and I want to echo what Kat said about repeating. Um, I don't think you can't repeat this enough because services are not being funded. So, thank you for letting me speak, and I just want to pass it on to the next person.
Okay, our next person is Ethan.
Hi, I'm also with abolitionist action, Central Coast Slow. I've been a student here for four years now. And the idea of increasing the budget for the police in the midst of this pandemic, while homeless people, people of color are being victimized, not having a place to sleep. We do not need to be enforcing these policies that are so aggressive towards homeless when they are the most at risk. And the police budget we have, we have five cops showing up to a protest of 10 people. It's so aggressive and we don't need more. We really don't need more when we could be investing this money in our community and addressing the root causes of these problems. And yeah, that's my, that's my time.
Okay, our next speaker is Emma.
Hi, my name is Emma and I'm also with the abolitionist, um, Central Coast. And I thank you for, um, giving me the time to talk about some issues that I, um, care about and that, um, I think our community needs to address. Um, I think by, uh, putting more money into the downtown community and providing vitality for that is putting profit over people. And there are people in our community that need, um, this money and these services. And the homeless people here shouldn't be, um, criminalized for not being able to pay rent or not being able to get the services that they need. So, um, I ask you to reconsider where you're putting your money. Um, and this includes divesting from the police budget and putting it into community members who may not have, the same amount and privileges we do to input in these community forums. Thank you so much for your time.
Oh, um, am I speaking?
I don't know what happened to the group, but yeah, go ahead, Garrett.
Hi, I'm Garrett, I'm, um, part of abolition action, Central Coast Slow. All solidarity to my people on the call right now and the House's community members, um, that we're really advocating for. I would also highly discourage the city council from, um, putting more money into, uh, our already bloated police budget. I don't, uh, think the new, um, police station is going to, like, help the root causes of why we have so many houses people in San Luis Obispo. Um, I think a really necessary thing, a very concrete thing that the city council could, um, fund instead of a new police station is like daily shower services for, uh, our houses' neighbors. I think that there's already something going on like weekly near the library. But that should be like, I don't understand why the city council can't fund that like every day. Like, we all have people with houses, we have the privilege of, uh, like a nice shower every day. So I don't really think that, um, that shouldn't be, that like privilege shouldn't be like bestowed upon, like, or given to our houses' neighbors if we have the money for it. And if we're like thinking about paying for another police station, I think there's definitely money for like supporting the basic needs of our houses' neighbors. Um, yeah, I would just like, like to ask all the city council members to like leverage their power to stop the plans of, um, a new police station and instead like invest in our actual community members and like keeping them safe and stuff through the pre- pandemic. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Brandon War- Wartrin, Watrin.
Yes, hello?
Hi.
Oh, yes, hi. Uh, I just wanted to echo the sentiments of, uh, the people who are s- using our tax dollars to build more community, more policing is a gross misuse. And the police facilities are fine enough as they are. And again, these can be reinvested into addressing the root causes of why we feel the need to, come out with aggressive tactics in the first place. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Kaylee Conrad. Okay. I'm not sure what happened, so, um, Isla? You need to unmute your mic also.
Hello, I'm so sorry, I just got disconnected. Um, hi, council members, my name is Kalea Conrad. I am also speaking on behalf of abolition action, Central Coast Slow. Um, I do want to echo those sentiments and, um, really emphasize that as community members, um, you all are talking about, um, or having our input. Um, and I'm really glad that you feel that way. I heard that you are prioritizing a task force, um, to advance diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. And while that sounds amazing, there are more, um, more necessary and more priorities that we should like prioritize in our community, such as housing, um, unhoused folks, eating people who are food insecure. Um, there are some really immediate and dire needs of our community. And I think that I'd like to echo, um, what everyone has been saying, that expanding and retrofitting a police station should be like the very absolute last priority. Um, because I know that you all do want to serve the community. And the ways, the ways to do so would be to not create a new pickleball court, which would further, um, displace houses' people because they live in Mitchell Park. Um, we think that, I, I think that we should instead just really focus on like the necessities. Um, every human being has a right to basic necessities such as food and clothing and housing. Um, and yeah, we, we really would love to see that, um, Black, Indigenous, and people of color in our community are prioritized, especially during such a vulnerable period where so many people face infection by COVID-19, um, they face eviction, they face, they face starvation. And I think I just want to further emphasize that everyone, everyone's, um, requests of your, of the Slow City Council are very valid. And we are only echoing these because we have not seen our demands met yet. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, Isla? Go ahead, Isla. Okay, we'll go move on to the next person. Our last speaker is JP.
Awesome, awesome. Hello, uh, all the council members, um, and Mayor, uh, Harmon, thanks so much. Um, council members, Andy and Erica, um, nice to see y'all again. Um, I have a couple of questions, um, and you know, I'm also here with the, you know, abolitionist folks. We're all here, um, hoping to help out the, the unhoused community and the, uh, Black and Indigenous, Black and Indigenous folks in the neighborhood. Um, I just wonder, uh, how many houseless folks y'all have had conversations with or have met or have, uh, spoken to or have seen, any, any of the above? Um, and when I hear ideas of, of a pickleball court being tossed into Mitchell Park, where we all know, everybody in the community knows that this is where folks sleep. Um, it's, it's bothersome, it's, it's concerning. And I'm, I'm confused as to why we prioritize pickleball courts that nobody really needs. Um, and not food services for those in need, housing services. Um, I know you, you, y'all have a couple of, uh, organizations, nonprofits. Um, but I think if we dedicate, um, actual profits, actual organizations, um, and buildings to helping out those houseless folk, um, y'all will be making a much, much, much bigger, uh, impact than what you're doing right now. Um, my second concern is, um, the, the, uh, the police department. Y'all want to add more funding to the police department, yet y'all don't want to, um, protect protesters who are out there in the streets fighting for what they believe in. Um, y'all want to, uh, uh, give them more money, um, when they have $7,000, $8,000 bikes that they ride around and kick out homeless folk in. Um, there have been sweeps, January was, uh, atrocious when it came to storms. Um, and nobody, nobody came out and helped these folks out. But instead, y'all have the audacity to take that money, take money that you could be giving them and taking that money and putting it towards police and folks that, where, uh, the taxpayers' money already, already is going to. There's no reason for that. Um, the last thing that I want to do, the last, the last note that I want to make is, um, I think y'all need to be putting a, a much bigger, uh, uh, I don't know the word that I'm looking for, but I think you need to put much more emphasis, emphasis is the word I'm looking for, much more emphasis on, uh, funding Black businesses and businesses by people of color, especially in the time of COVID, when y'all are a small business community, downtown is flooded with small businesses. Um, there needs to be much, much, much more funding for those, um, for the Black and Indigenous folk and the people of color. Thank y'all so much, really appreciate it. I hope y'all have a wonderful rest of your day.
Hello, is it my turn? Can you hear me?
I can hear you, yeah.
Thank you, good morning, members of the city council. My name is Alejandro, I am a resident of San Luis Obispo and a Cal Poly student. And I am also speaking on behalf of abolitionist action, Central Coast Slow. And as you can see, there is a substantial amount of community support for our core priorities of divesting from police and investing in our communities. In particular, investing in services rather than sweeps, investing in rent, mortgage, and utility relief for our communities, and investing in things that actually keep people safe rather than police. We call ourselves abolitionists because we connect the history of policing and all of the violence associated with it, back to the structures of slavery, back to the frontier mob, back to the bosses enforcers. And we are exercising clarity about the fact that police were never, ever meant to protect public safety or to serve the people. We know that there are seismic requirements that dictate, um, the, the renovations that go into a new police station. So we are calling on you to only do what you are required to by law and not any more than that. There, no need for a new police station. Renovations that you're required to do are one thing, but investing in a whole new police station would not be a good use of ta- taxpayer funds right now. As you can see, the, the people in this community also have a lot of compassion for the ones among us that need the most help right now. It's come up a few times that these are houseless people, these are Black people in the community, these are Indigenous people, these are criminalized brown people in the community. And we are once again asking you to fulfill your commitments to serve the ones among your, your constituents that need it the most. And again, that is not investing in police because police do not keep us safe. That is investing in affordable housing, that is investing in services rather than That is investing in affordable housing, that is investing in services rather than sweeps, that is investing in rent, mortgage, and utility relief for all because so many people are struggling during this pandemic. And we simply wish to remind you of that once more. Thank you.
That was our last speaker.
Thank you, Teresa. So we will uh take a break at this time.
Pardon me, mayor, for interrupting, but can I please ask City Manager Johnson to just briefly share um the, the date, the, the sort of procedure that we're already underway with in terms of folks that are interested in having the conversation specifically about the police station? Can he remind us all? When that's coming to council? It's April sixth, maybe?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of council, um the, the, the council is scheduled to have a hearing on April sixth um about the police station. We're gonna, we're gonna do a, a little bit, go back in time. We've got studies for about a decade or so ago, looking at, you know, options to address the structural and physical um um challenges and problems with the police station. You know, as the city council know, we manage facilities all throughout um the city. We have facilities for public works, community development, city hall, et cetera. And so we do on occasion do facility assessments and look at uh their condition, et cetera. And so that's no different than the police station in which we've taken a long-term look um at this. This is not the first time the council's looked at this. This has been a number of points along the way. And so we're gonna um uh bring back forward those studies and then have a discussion with the council about the cost, the timing, the schedule associated with um the proposed uh project. And uh then we'll, from there, we'll receive direction from the council on what next, next steps to take.
Also, it might be helpful for the people that are, um if they're still on the call to to just know that we've just gotten started with our conversation today. We've only been through a couple of the major city goals. Um I can tell you that um houselessness is on, I think, all of our lists. So that will be upcoming after our break and a lot of the things that were brought up. So I, I, I can see how it might be confusing. It might have sounded like, oh, like, oh, we care about is downtown vitality since it's been a topic of, that's come up. But I assure you that um our, our list of uh concerns and um are much more expansive than that.
Councilmember P, did you have a comment?
Uh Mayor Harmon covered it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we will uh take a, a break. It's eleven thirty now. We will plan to be uh back at noon. And we'll pick up, actually, the next theme that we'll be covering is housing homelessness. Uh so we will pick up there and um continue our process. Thank you. We'll see you at noon.
Thank you.
Okay. Are we ready to get back into it?
Yep.
So we have gotten through uh two of our goal statements. And um our intention now for our next two hours here would be to cover the last couple uh themes that you had shared and then determine um from that point if we, if we need a prioritization activity or not. And then um at that point, whether we do it or not, we would come back to, Teresa is, is putting those into one file. So we can look at those draft statements with a starter from your vision statement you used last time in nineteen twenty-one. So we could have that opening kind of context setting through the lens of kind of framing. And then we'll look at the goal statements one more time and clarify um outcomes, tangible steps you'd like to see the, the staff to be focusing on as they work on their work plans over the next couple of months. Um and then we will talk about next steps and um adjourn. So I'm gonna share my screen here, the next um let me know, can, are you looking at the slide that says theme, housing and homelessness?
Yes.
Excellent, okay.
Sorry, it's in the format of, of having both slides.
Oh, thank you. Let me change that. I must have selected the wrong screen. No, it's still doing that, isn't it?
No, that's, 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 that was right.
Oh, it was?
Yeah, yeah.
Let me go back. That's the problem when you have three screens. It's like, which plane am I flying, you know? All right, is it how we did, how we now? Is it the right one? Excellent. Okay, so housing and homelessness um is the next theme. We have um animating up on the screen here, just a second, is the uh nineteen twenty-one goal, which theme was around housing. You can see that language there. And then um the verbatim candidate goals that you've all submitted. You'll notice that on this, there are um some council members submitted housing specifically or housing affordability specifically, and then um also a goal around homelessness. And I think we have a, a conversation to have here about, are these goals bind into something like housing and homelessness? Um or are they separate, two separate major city goals? Councilmember Christensen?
Well, everybody knew I was gonna be the first to raise my hand on this one. And I hope our speakers from the earlier public speak, public comment period are listening to me because I've spent twenty years talking about housing and homelessness. It feels, it feels a little bit uh oblivious to not um to not recognize that this council and the city and many, 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 many people in the community have been working on these issues for a long time. And it is a very challenging and complex issue. So it's, does, you don't just snap your fingers and cure it, even though it seems like from the outside that there would be easy things to do. So my opinion, and I'm really gonna argue with people about this, is that the, the most productive thing that the city can do, given the fact that we do not receive funding for those supplementary services, supplementary services like mental health services, like drug and alcohol services, like all the case management that we've learned, need to go with a lot of um tackling the most difficult issues around hous- housing and homelessness, unhoused, is the production of housing. So that's why I think that homelessness and housing always go together because the most um useful thing we can do is to facilitate the actual production of affordable or low-income alternative kinds of housing, and that's why I put them together. Mine's on the bottom and I put them together and it's really specific. I listed some of the other things that we could or might do around housing and homelessness uh because I wanted to give people a flavor, the community a flavor for what things that the city can or might do as opposed to we're not providing case management services, we're not doing mental health services, we're not doing drug and alcohol services. All those things are not gonna happen under the city's purview. That is not where we receive our funding. We don't have the expertise that we can work with the folks who do that for sure, and we can facilitate a lot of conversations around it. But I, I wanted to be really specific about this. I don't think homelessness on its own is something that the city can do directly about enough to make it a separate um uh major goal. That's why I included them together and I have been, you know, I'm encouraged by what we've done just recently with appointing a uh homeless or housing services manager, but that's my uh, that's my opinion and that's what I, why I put put this the way I did. I would not expect to have all that stuff in there about possible homelessness programs, but I put that in there for education purposes.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart, I mean Vice Mayor Stewart, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Um yeah, I struggled with putting these together because last time we did that and I did not agree with it last time and I don't agree with it now. Um housing is what we have some ability to help with. We still don't build housing either, though. It's still the developers, property owners, et cetera, that, that work on that. Um and if we continue to say, well, the county's about to take care of that, well, they're not taking care of that. We're still having our community come, come to us and say, you know, the businesses, the people who are unhoused, the friends and family, everyone is affect tourism, is affected by how we're not able to fully address and reduce chronic homelessness. So I do believe that it needs to obviously come from the county, the state, the federal funding. That's where it comes from and we need to continue to partner with them. We need to continue to partner with the nonprofits and those who can help us help the unhoused into services and housing. So I feel like there's gotta be a really, a much more concentrated effort around, it's not just housing. The wraparound services has to happen um from our partners and it doesn't have to happen with us, but just even the recent um homelessness manager that we are recruiting for is really the fact that we need some coordination between all of these different organizations to actually make, you know, meaningful change in addressing homelessness. So I think there actually has to be two different focuses um and two different um two different goals. Otherwise, we're gonna continue to be in the same place we're in, and housing affordability is beyond just homeless. We also have, you know, people who are financially not able to purchase a home. We have people who are not able to purchase the, you know, million-dollar home. So we have the, you know, the very low income, the low income. I, I understand all the different brackets we have to help facilitate housing with. And I think we need to continue to do that, which may need to, you know, continue to increase funding, whether it's partnering, finding new grants, whatever those things may be that we're gonna do. Um and I'll leave that to the work plan discussion for later, but I really do think that these need to be two different things.
Councilmember Marx, and then please.
Oh, yes, thank you. Uh well, I also combined uh both of these. I feel there are two sides of the same coin. And I have to tell you, from my um years-long work with homeless people um the, or unhoused, the main goal is to find them housing. And so these programs that exist um and future programs that could exist uh all have that as, as the primary goal, including that housing-first program. I do want to point out in my suggested uh goal that I'm saying facilitate housing is allowed within our growth management ordinance, including affordable workforce-supported and temporary housing and implement effective strategies to address and reduce homelessness, including providing wraparound mental health and social services to partner with the police as, as possible. I should say as much as possible by leveraging county, state, and federal funding. So that acknowledges that the, unfortunately, the city is not um, we're not empowered or authorized, and we're certainly not funded to do uh and meet the needs of all of these different uh services that um uh people wish and that the homeless need. So
Can I ask, can I just ask a question about, because, because it does say, including providing the services. We don't provide the services in your, in your statement, so that confused me. What, is there a way, way you would reword that that would make?
Well, facilitating, yeah, facilit- facilitating would be good or coordinating, something like that.
But you didn't actually mean that we would provide the services.
Uh, well, we have uh in the budget, I think, proposed at least hiring another mental health worker on the streets. But we could say facilitating and that would kind of cover both. Some of it we might be able to do, some of it we absolutely can't do. So I, I accept that, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for your clarifications, council member.
You are welcome.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilmember P?
Uh thanks. I, I think it's a little bit of semantics whether or not it's one goal or two. I think having, naming the speci- specifically naming homelessness, I think, is um essential, whether it's its own goal or separate. I think ha- although I put them as separate kind of um in alignment with Vice Mayor Stewart's comments, like these are kind of two big efforts. Um and I was, you know, at some point wanting to check with staff. Is this, you know, is it better or worse to have it um mashed together? But having them together, it's, and I, I really appreciate the way um Councilmember Christensen kind of laid out all the um possible actions in there. And again, you know, that gets pulled out for action items. But the point being that the work programs really recognize that the role of the city is um there's kind of in that continuum. So we absolutely are trying to get to housing for everyone and workforce housing, et cetera. But what I had put in there and I think is showing up in these different ways is kind of these uh transitional shelter options. Are we, I, I think as a city, it's time for us to be really more intentional about um where could sleeping pod kinds of um tiny home um supportive housing, SROs, hotel conversions, all of those types of things that are not the, the services that are the county. But yeah, the people need a place to physically live while they're getting those wraparound services um provided for others. So um whether or not it's together, uh as long as the work programs are in there and intentionality that we are doing our part in a coordinated effort for people who are unhoused.
Thank you, Councilmember P. Mayor Harmon, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I mean, as has been noted, all of these goals are interwoven, this one in particular. And nevertheless, it feels just intuitively um that they could and, and should be separate efforts. It, the, just the complexity of houselessness and all of the um legal aspects. There's, as you've heard, a lot of advocacy going on around this topic. Um it, it, it seems like on some level, like uh uh obviously very interrelated in the very literal sense that these folks need homes, but there's so much more going on than that. Um I wonder about the level of um focus or uh success that we would have if, and I guess I just don't understand, maybe, it may be Derek or someone can chime in about what it might look like um logistically or structurally maybe is a better term, in terms of like the homeless's services coordinator that we'll have and who's under who and how that works. And um, yeah, because I think it, it's, to me, it makes more sense to have these be separate but very, you know, closely related efforts.
Yeah, uh my, my suggestion, I, I do think that it's helpful to couple them. And I, I think the reason why there wasn't the focus last time is that, you know, if you look at the goal from last time, it was an emphasis on affordable housing, including unhoused people. What I hear this time, and I think what is needed this time, is actually to have proactive statements and outcomes related to partnering with the county, NGOs, uh you know, um our nonprofits, et cetera, and figure out ultimately what are the effective ways that the city can uh have in turn, within our role and responsibility and the type of funding that we receive. Um you know, I'll use one example, you know, the Seventy Now program. That program happened in, in the city of San Luis Obispo because we dedicated resources, we, we, we use our affordable housing fund. That kind of policy signal to the staff helps us then partner with Haslow or People Self Help to then, you know, be effective where we can be effective in helping build the housing and then let the other partners like TIMA or uh, or the county or um Haslow come in and provide the services.
Yeah, I mean, also, I'm sorry, were you not finished, Derek?
No, I was gonna say one more thing I didn't answer for your question. So the, the homeless response manager is intended to be co-located in housing. So with Kara and so that um grants and aid, our uh CDBG program, et cetera. All of that is working together in tandem because they're, they're obviously linked at the hip. So um they're gonna work under community development, uh and, and that's the structure we think best will then create the synergies that are needed.
Okay, because the other thing that keeps coming up and rightfully so are people's continued frustration with us in the past um four years, especially talking about um affordable, more affordable, 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 and really not getting anywhere close to that in terms of non, you know, non-income qualified types of housing. And we see, you know, San Luis Ranch coming on board and people are very disappointed and frustrated and about the, the 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 story that we've been telling, which is that we're trying to create affordability here. And people aren't, um generally speaking, um, we're not, we're not meeting that. And I get it, there's a lot of forces out there. We don't build the housing, market forces, data, data, all that stuff. And though, I mean, I do feel like that we need to, I I'm hoping we can be very specific and clear about the fact that we haven't really been able to create the type of affordability that your sort of average working person here is looking for. Um, and and put that in in here too. And I guess that's another reason I was thinking if these are separate, you know, can we get more focused on this very specific things that we need? We don't just necessarily need, I mean, we need all kinds of housing, I get it. But we need more than anything this, you know, missing middle that we keep talking about, but haven't really created the policies um to create that.
And we're coming to the council in March with a missing middle presentation. Um, so we'll be, we'll be coming forward with with strategy because that's a that's an item from our current work program.
Okay, that that's great. Okay.
And and also, I just, I mean, I I think several of us did mention low income workforce housing. So uh as you point out, it's not easy to actually, but that has more to do with factors way beyond our control.
Yeah, I mean, except we could, for example, create a land trust, you know, and things like that. And I'm not talking about low income. I mean, although, yes, that too. But at least for folks that are income qualified, even though it's also difficult, there's a pathway. Whereas for a lot of people in the missing middle, there's just no pathway whatsoever. Um, and and I think also too, in terms of like integrity, for for me anyway, I feel less, I'm feeling more and more uncomfortable even talking about affordability. Because if we're not going to be able to actually create that, then I think we need to be clear about that, or at least I'd like to be clear about that and not sort of almost pretend like. And I'm not, you know, like we're like San Luis Ranch is going to be um, you know, affordable on some level. And even though it is, maybe there are units there in that in that example that are more affordable than some other um homes here in town, it's still way outside of what hard, you know, double income, hardworking people can afford.
Well, I'll I'll tell you right now, mayor, I've been working on this, as you know, a long time. And I'll, if it, we are not going to create that kind of thing where we build 3,000 homes that are all $300,000 each or less. It's not going to happen here. So what where I started, and I guess it does take perspective to feel, because I get what you're saying about the frustration and the almost embarrassment. It's if you started where I started, which was 25 years ago, when people were basically still arguing, are we going to grow? Are we going to not grow? We shouldn't build anything. And there and the policies and the staff were basically set up to deny everything. I mean, I started by saying if we can build one unit, that'll be better than zero units. And if we can build two, that'll be better than one. And so the fact that we have not only built way more than two and have many thousands of homes coming online to me is been a success. Now, again, you're right, for the perspective of can everybody who wants to live here, who even though they may be working two jobs and being, you know, frugal, good, working people, if they all, no, we're not going to do that. That's not going to happen. So.
Thank you.
So that's, I'll just, you can just tell them to come to me. I'll talk to them as long as as long as they want. But we've made a lot of progress. And I think these comments about, and I think Derek really said it too. Have and so did Erica, having these very focused, specific things help. The fact that we put the production of housing in our last goal made a huge difference. That is why we are seeing these built, these buildings and these properties being graded now instead of five years from now. Believe me, we we, this is one of those things that it just doesn't happen overnight. So it feels like it's never happening, like nothing's happening. But we have made an enormous amount of progress because of this specific language and the specific focus that this council and those right before us have put into it. And I believe that we will, we will be able to make even more progress in the next couple of years. But it isn't going to be magical and it's not going to be for everybody. It just isn't possible.
Hmm, thank you. We'll go to, we'll go to councilmember Marks and then Vice Mayor Stewart. I do want to just highlight that uh here we're having conversation and then we can get into a launching of actual verbiage, right? That might help us to finesse and get combined, you know, how specific and do we have tangible steps that we'd like to share with the staff to be able to try to execute on. Councilmember Marks.
Uh, yes, I I just want to say, I'm going to reiterate what I said, that if you don't have the housing, there's no way you can address homelessness. And although we haven't reached our goals, we're in the goal setting um mode for the next two years. I think they're worthy goals and I think they go together. Very practically speaking, we have committed to having five goals. And we're in a way, it's kind of like a game and we could have six. If we got rid of DEI or essential services or economic stability, sure, we could have separate housing and and homeless uh goals. But I'm not willing to let go of of any of those so far. And I think combining them, especially like uh the city manager said, that the the homeless services or unhoused services coordinator in the structure of the city is in the housing department um or the the aspect of community development that handles housing, I think it makes perfect sense. I also don't think it's going to detract uh from our efforts to facilitate whatever we can and leverage whatever we can to help the homeless situation if it's combined with housing. I I don't see it as a loss of of energy in either one of those. So I'm going to stick with um um councilmember Christensen's language um up to where she starts getting specific. Let me see if I can find that. Yeah.
On this screen here.
Yeah. So I would just put a period after um uh housing options. So it would be facilitate the act continued actual production of housing, including the necessary supporting infrastructure with an emphasis on low income and workforce housing. Uh, and then this includes addressing homelessness. And then um also we bring in my uh language, which would say um uh by leveraging county, state and federal funding, something like that.
Okay, councilmember or Vice Mayor Stewart.
Thank you. City manager, if you if you feel these two together makes the most sense, then you know, I I yield to the staff. However, that's a really huge goal. Um, and so that concerns me because we'll put in five goals and really that's that's two in one um in my mind. Um, so working with the police, working with the county, the state, the nonprofits, NGOs, it's 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 not just housing. Um, so that does concern me. And Jen, you know, similarly, I've worked with um many different programs, including the Seventy Now when I was at United Way and including uh working with Capslow and Before Forty Prado uh with the Friends of Prado and through providing meals. And and one of the things that was very clear was that you could put somebody housing all you want, but if there were other services they needed, they weren't staying in that house. So while we don't provide those services, I fully understand that, um, councilmember Christensen, the fact that we need to support those wraparound services or facilitate whichever word you want to use, that is a lot of work. I mean, one, you know, talk to obviously John Clemons and everyone else that's involved. As you know, Carlin, that's a lot of work. So I'm just, I'm I'm concerned that we will be putting a great deal of expectations and time and money um on our staff.
That, you know what, I actually talked to staff before I did this. That's why they're together. Yeah, because um, yes, the actual provision of the wraparound services is enormously expensive and time consuming. But the pieces that we can do are relatively tied together and relatively connected and can and and can be, you know, done under one roof. And I I go back to what mayor, I mean, uh, uh, councilmember Mark says, you know, first you gotta have a place to put people before you can can uh talk about, you know, giving them their services or at least concurrently. So that that that's why I started with housing is because I saw people living on the streets and it wasn't okay. So.
Vice Mayor Stewart, did you have a, nope?
Nope.
Okay. Would would you mind if I were to put up a a potential draft statement for us to start to uh navigate through at this point? I'll take that. Okay. So this one, I did combine them. This was my objective take, looking at the where I saw alignment. And I I did combine them as um several of you have stated, although they do both have a an element in the draft statement. So housing homelessness would be the label. The top part is the draft of the actual statement, which is taking language from uh your various goal statements. This does bring in that lens of DEI and climate action, so we might want to pull that out, as we talked about before. But continue to facilitate the production of housing, including the necessary supporting infrastructure with an emphasis on affordable and workforce housing. Might take out that next clause around through blah, blah, blah. In collaboration with local partners, the state and federal government discover and implement comprehensive effective strategies to assist those who are unhoused to reduce chronic homelessness. So an effort to have very much a clear element of the housing production, knowing that that is addressing both affordable and workforce housing, trying to get that missing middle piece in there. And the second statement really around a focus on homelessness and knowing that it needs to have collaboration with other partners. That's not something the city can do alone. And then some of these potential tangible steps, what I would imagine you would want to add to today, you would want to add to today, are some of the elements that I saw detailed in um your goal statements you had submitted. So these could give some additional direction to staff around the kinds of efforts you want to see.
I'd like to just add that when you're talking about local partners, you need to add the county in there because the state actually gives the money to uh the county. And sometimes they just sit on it and they don't uh give the cities what they need to address homelessness.
Okay, Teresa, could we?
We need to put the county in there.
Okay. Teresa, could you pull up the Word document? Maybe we can start with that. And so I I hear what councilmember Marks is saying is that second statement would say in collaboration with local partners, the county, the state and federal government.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Mm hmm. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Perfect, Teresa, thank you.
Wouldn't county be part of local partners?
Could be.
Well, local partners you could think of as TIMA, you know, uh Haslow, uh all of the different.
NGOs.
Yeah, all of the different housing partners that are often nonprofits and uh and private as opposed to the county specifically is is our main uh pot of uh of money from the feds and the state.
County. So in collaboration with local partners and the county, state and federal government. Although actually, we don't want to collaborate with them. We want to leverage funds and get money from them. We want.
Well, we want them to give money to the the people who are building that housing. That's what we want and providing those services.
So it sounds like listing them separately is something that keeps that front of mind as a as a key partner. Are we comfortable in that first statement that part Teresa has highlighted to take that out? Because we were saying we were going to add that kind of overall lens. Okay, so I think you can delete that, Teresa. Other thoughts? And we we can cut, we'll circle back to some of those potential tangible steps after we get through the the goals we have alignment on. How does?
I I think this is, I think, I think this looks pretty good.
Other comments on this one? Are we feeling, yes, councilmember, please?
I guess the only part that I'm, and I don't have an answer, um but effective strategies to assist those who are unhoused. I I feel like um, and maybe it's fine, I guess I just want the larger context. There were some of them that had um wording that was a little bit more, less about the in uh individuals and more about this kind of the chronic systems of homelessness. I I guess I'm, I guess we leave it right now and move on. But if anybody, I don't know if that strikes anybody else um as as maybe not quite. It just feels like it it points, it's like a little victimization or something. I don't know. It just struck me as as not quite right, but um I'll I'll keep mulling on it.
Okay.
I think you just say effective strategies to reduce chronic homelessness or.
There we go.
Because I know we're talking about those who are unhoused, but that kind of is inferred by reducing chronic homelessness.
Right, without targeting anyone. Good, good.
Right.
Um, I wanted to say.
Effective strategies to reduce chronic homelessness. Thank you. Councilmember Marks.
Yeah, I would say um, we're talking about this uh second sentence. To just say collaborate with social partners and leverage funding from the county, the state and federal government. Because that's, I think, a big part of what the homeless coordinator is going to be doing, not just, you know, it's going to actually be going after money. So.
So Teresa, that second sentence would be collaborate with, so instead of in collaboration, you'd make it active. Collaborate with local partners and leverage funding.
And leverage.
Dan, could we say resources instead of funding, just because?
Sure, resources. Yes, ma'am, that's fine.
Leveraged resources with or of or through?
From, from.
From, resources from. Thank you.
I want, I want their money.
And and Teresa, just making that collaboration collaborate. Perfect. And then I think it would need to be with local partners and leverage resources from the county, the state and federal government to discover and implement comprehensive and effective strategies to reduce chronic homelessness. How are we feeling about that? Got some thumbs up? I got three thumbs up.
Well, okay, no, I I'm gonna, I'm gonna quibble with chronic. I think there are temporary homeless people who need help too. Like they just got addicted and there's.
Yeah, let's just take out, let's take out chronic to reduce homelessness now.
There's some statistics that if you can get somebody back in housing within the first month, they won't become chronically homeless. But if you don't, there's a danger.
Thank you. Derek, you had a comment?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Marks, um, I think, you know, homelessness is one of those areas where I think it's tempting to try to want to solve it all. Um, and I would say that from my experience and talking to a lot of the service providers and my experience working on it in over 30 years is that, you know, really where the frustration is, where the concern is, is about chronic homelessness. You know, that, you know, if you think about the the categories of of folks who are without home, um, those that want to change, there are more than ample services and ability and likely places for people to land to get back on their feet. It is those chronic homeless that I think are the ones that are of most concern, whether folks suffering from mental illness or some form of addiction or both. So I I I think, you know, I would just invite council to be real crystal clear where you want to focus our our attention.
Yeah, I was gonna say something and then I decided not to keep laboring the point. But I I would agree with um Mr. Johnson in in the sense of if we're going to try to really focus staff on where we receive the most concern uh from our public as from where we know where the toughest problem is, it's been the most difficult to crack, I would say it is chronic homelessness. And those folks are often suffering from the things we talked about, mental illness, substance abuse, but often just, you know, uh, medical conditions in general and not necessarily uh substance abuse. But so it it covers a wide range of the folks that we um most often hear about and from. And I I think it would help if we kept in the the phrase, the word chronic personally. Uh, we know the, we know lots of people who, I mean, I do, I know lots of people who experience temporary homelessness and and a great number of those are helped by our services and or their own resilience and friends and family, that kind of thing. But it's the chronic folks that are, that we are the ones that we hear about and see so much of. So. that we are the ones that we hear about and see so much of. So that's my, that's my vote, is to put it back in.
Are we comfortable with putting that back in to help focus? I think what I hear from um City Manager Johnson is that it would help to clarify if it's in there to know where to focus resources. If it's not in there, again, would need to have clarity on how to focus resources. Council or Vice Mayor Stewart?
I'd like to see the chronic remain. Um, it doesn't mean that we won't try to help others, but I do believe that there are many nonprofits that are already working on that, many NGOs that are already working on that. And kind of similar to our D E I discussion earlier, it's not as though we're trying to not help others. It's that we need to kind of focus in on who needs the help the most.
Okay, I'll withdraw my objection. That's fine. We can, chronic can be back in there.
And I just want to add, I I totally agree, Councilmember Marx. There are plenty of um there's plenty of data around how if we can help someone get into housing ASAP, that will help them on on the long run much, much better. And I think we can still, you know, support our nonprofits in that way.
Okay, so this would be. Oh, go ahead.
I just I just want to say that what it says right now is that we're only going to uh put resources toward collaborating with local partners and getting money from the feds and the state and the county aimed at chronic homelessness. Is that what we want to do? Are we not interested in reducing homelessness in general?
I think, I think that gives us plenty to do over the next two years. It really, it really focuses in on some major move, getting some major movement with this, with this population that we have not seen. I I think it's really important, especially if we're trying to deal with COVID and pandemic stuff uh in general and all kinds of other challenges. We really need to kickstart this. And and that's why we're making it a major city goal, is we need to kickstart this specific aspect, or we're just gonna, they're gonna still continue to fall through the cracks. Because all the other stuff is still important and good too. So yeah, I'm really supportive of of uh keeping it the way it is.
Okay.
Madam Mayor and Member of the Council, I I just want to put a little color on this conversation in terms of there's some operative words here that are really helpful for us. That key phrase towards the end, it's the um second to last line, effective strategies. What I have seen work really, really well is that cities have taken upon themselves to unpack a lot of this and develop their own strategy, their own city um strategic plan around homelessness. So it's clear about roles, responsibilities, and how they can get to the other elements of the major city goal that are described here. For example, leveraging that state and federal dollars. So with, so just so that you you're aware, my recommendation would be as part of the work program would be that our homeless response manager, in concert with our housing team, develop a quick housing action plan for our city. So it's very clear about the space that we're going to uh directly participate in, where we're going to rely on NGOs and partners, where we're going to then push on the county and the federal, state and federal government.
I want to just echo that sentiment, working with lots of different cities and counties across the state, that I think that philosophy really leads to um solution building as a as a full region, right? Everyone has a piece in it and it's and the conversation you all have been having here about it's what's in the cities' authority and ability to make movement on and where you can utilize your collaboration and um tapping into others to help also build solutions to this major issue. So do we feel like we can, we can have this captured in a in a good nutshell to move into our fourth piece? Okay. So I just want to remind you, because I know we're moving in and out of uh different goals. At this point, we have uh three that we've aligned on. So we have our um forgive me if I don't get the exact wording right, but economic recovery, resiliency, and sustainability. We have our diversity, equity, and inclusion, and now we have housing and homelessness. And to Vice Mayor Stewart's point, or no, actually, I think it was Councilmember Marx, you were making the comment about, you know, how many of these uh we can really manage. And then Vice Mayor Stewart was saying, you know, are we going to end up with, this is huge, right? So when we combine these? The final one that we really had quite a lot of alignment on is related to climate action. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen on this one, because at this point, we do have three. And I want you to have a chance to take a look at this fourth one. It's thinking. You see it? Good? Okay. So climate action, you you did have a nineteen twenty-one goal related to climate action. And the verbatims that were shared, you have coming up on your screen there. Um, I would just like to to note that um Vice Mayor Stewart and Councilmember Christensen essentially had highlighted the same verbiage that was in the nineteen twenty-one climate action goal. Um, with Vice Mayor Stewart had the exact wording. Councilmember Christiansen, I'm not sure if this is on purpose or not, but it it took out um update as it was just to continue.
Yes, because we we updated our plan. It got updated.
Great.
That's why.
So so those are, um, I just want to highlight that. Those were in alignment with the nineteen twenty-one. And as such, what you'll see, I'll just go to the next, I won't go to the next screen actually, because it's essentially a um what I'm, what I was suggesting and looking at this is a continuation of the nineteen twenty-one goal. And then we could clarify what some of those tangible steps are over the course of the next two years that you'd like to clarify for staff to focus attention on on this very large um issue. So comments, thoughts, questions about this one? Yes, Councilmember Marx?
Uh, yes, thank you. I would just like to say that um over the past four years, there's been a lot done to address climate action. And of course, there's way more that we need to do. Um, but what I have noticed is that the emphasis is almost entirely on the built environment and not on the natural environment. In terms of the actual work plans, in terms of what actually has happened uh with these different programs. So what I did with climate action um was actually divided into two. Uh, I put it into essential services and um uh talked about implementing the action, climate action plan as to the built environment, maintain and improve core infrastructure, including roads, sidewalks, greenways, and bike paths. But then there's open space. And the fact is that the city has been preserving, protecting, and um expanding our open space for decades. And just the fact that we've been doing the right thing for decades and it's not a new shiny idea uh doesn't mean that we should let up uh at this point. Um, the governor has implemented um something that's called thirty by thirty, so that thirty percent of the of the land would be preserved in open space or agriculture by the year twenty thirty, which is not that far away. And now on the federal level, President Biden has also is looking at doing the same thing on the federal level. So finally, people are kind of coming around to what we have been doing all this time. But I I'm really concerned that this council um is not respecting uh the values and priorities of the um city residents, especially when it comes to preservation and and maintenance of open space. So I would, I would like to um see open space come first and then climate action and sustainability. And that's why I that's why I put the, put it in in that action. So there's two things. I I'm almost finished, Councilmember Christensen. Um, the built environment, the goal of that is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, but making concrete and cement and making uh uh, you know, uh protected bike, bikeways and all that. Um, that also generates a greenhouse gases. There's a lot of things we do in the built, in the, in the uh built environment that actually produce uh greenhouse gases. And when it comes to the natural side of the coin of climate action, it's the opposite. If we increase our urban forest, if we uh start a program that has essentially victory gardens, people are growing vegetables in their in their yards, and if we continue to expand and um maintain and protect open space, we're doing more than just reducing greenhouse gases. We're actually doing sequestration of carbon. And I think we all understand that, but I'm going into some detail because I'm not sure that the public understands that. So I really do not want to see the open space budget decimated. I don't want to see the job description of our natural resources manager watered down any further. Um, you know, and I also really don't want the priorities and values of our city residents to um, you know, in in any way be disrespected. I also want to point out that our open spaces are free, although there's a cost in terms of maintenance with the rangers, but it's free to the public. Talk about inclusive and open to everyone. It's definitely open to everyone. Uh, including residents, including community members, including visitors to our area. So I'm I'm going to stop there, but I I just really do not want to see open space in any way downplayed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Marx. Councilmember Christensen and then Vice Mayor Stewart.
I appreciate those remarks, Jan. You know, I've worked with you for a long time uh before I was on the council as the planning commissioner and and our doing our council, other council times and uh and of course now too. And I I kind of want to just take a little bit of umbrage with your statement that this council has in any way, um, you know, uh not invested fully and wholeheartedly and passionately in our open space and urban forests. We've done, we haven't cut budgets, we haven't cut the position, we haven't done anything to negative to our open space. And in fact, we've kept up the same level of uh funding, if not more. So I know that the perception out there seems to be that there's been some kind of, you know, falling off. And I think it has to do with the one program that um of the night hiking, but that, you know, one tiny little pilot program is not undermining our incredibly strong and passionate dedication to the continuance of preservation enhancement and addition of open space. And uh Mr. Hill has proven, uh, you know, provided much information along this lines in terms of the number of hours and staffing and uh acreage acquired and um, you know, plans done and all sorts of things. So I just want to, you know, I just want to really make sure that people understand that that um that there has not been, uh, you know, falling away from open space. And 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 it's because precisely what you mentioned, the connection with um with open space is, you know, not only obviously is, you know, recreational and mental health and all the reasons, but just because it is a big part of climate response, climate action response. So that's, you know, I I I want to be really clear about that. Uh, you know, if you want to put it in climate action and open space as the title, fine. But you'll see for both uh Erica and me at least, and probably for uh uh Andy Pease too, maybe not. Um, yeah, she has opened, we all have open space in there. We all have something about open space in there. And I actually, actually also like to put in urban forest because I would like to have more trees always. Um, where where I wanted to point out that both Erica and I went, that is actually different from uh the previous goal on on climate action, was that we did include alternative and sustainable transportation here. And that is because we know the neck, we've gone through the, you know, the C C E program. We've we've updated our climate action plan and there's tons of programs in there that are, you know, we can still handpick some really, you know, bank, good bang for the buck ones. But one of the key, key components of climate action response is the transportation piece, you know, which is, you know, biking, ped, you know, bus, uh, alternative forms, different electrification, blah, 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 all those things. And so both of us added that in there, alternative and sustainable transportation. And I know somebody else had it as a separate goal, and I was trying to make fewer goals, but to me.
It's in mine too, actually.
Yeah, I know, and you had that, you had it. So so I just wanted, you know, I I want to say that to me, climate action, again, because it weaves its way through everything we do, but it remains, you know, I think as our mayor has said, and he said when she got elected and has said, you know, for four years since, it remains, it does remain the long-term uh, you know, quality of life uh issue uh for our entire planet. And it's really important to have that as um as a goal. And and I believe that the language of several of our um, the proposed language of several of our uh major goals recognizes that, talks about our climate act- action plan, continuing to implement it, mentions alternative transportation, absolutely includes preservation and enhancement of open space and urban forest, and also talks about, you know, planning for resilience as we continue to have the change. So um, I I just, you know, I I support everything you say, Jan, but I don't, I don't think it's in response to any kind of, you know, lacking uh in on our open space plans I and and dedication. I think it's just naturally a part. And many, many, many aspects of open space policy have been embedded in our uh in our general plan at this point. And, you know, are ongoing, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Christensen. We're, we'll go to Vice Mayor Stewart and then uh Councilmember P's.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate a lot of what you said, Jan. Words are important and disrespecting the public and disrespecting the thoughts of open space is concerning to me because as Councilmember Christensen just finished saying, um, open space has not been something that we have removed from our actions or the staff expectations or the program expectations. Um, and in fact, we just talked about it our last meeting, how open space is still a major aspect that is is baked into um what we're doing as we move forward. Um, I want to go back a little bit to the update and implement. I understand, uh, Councilmember Christensen, yes, we just um adopted our climate action plan this last year, but there's still little bits, as we talk about lenses through um diversity, equity, inclusion. Open space, for example, we call our special place. Special place is exclusive. So there's just some wording that I think we could go back and relook at our plan and just make sure it is welcoming and inclusive. So that's one of the things. Um, and I I did make sure that we had um enhancement of our open space and urban forest. That was very important to me as we talk about um, you know, greenhouse gases and how obviously cars and vehicles. But of course, like you said, the carbon sequestration, um, Councilmember Marx, is very important. So we need to continue. Since since I was campaigning, I was talking to many people about urban forests and how we need to do better. Um, and then the alternative and sustainable transportation, that's the greenhouse gases aspect, that's moving around um, moving around our city in a more sustainable way as far as our climate and also for people as far as our socioeconomic um status and different uh financial backgrounds and where we're all at, how to get around um the city is going to be important that we also continue to move away from just cars. Um, and how and what types of cars and and if it is an electric car, great, but do we have more charging stations? You know, there's a lot more that's to that. So as we continue, planning for resilience, I think, does come back into the open space, does come back into the forest, does come back into transportation. Um, overall, as a whole, for us to get to that carbon neutral space.
Thank you. Councilmember P's?
Thanks. I don't have much to add, only an observation. I'd like to hear from uh Mayor Harmon about um the in interesting, the that nexus that we keep talking about, the overlapping goals from the climate action and where Mayor Harmon's goes appropriately to kind of the economic side, Green New Deal, um, and then as Eric V M brought up, this climate action platform or Climate Safe California platform uh that talks about a just transition for those who are in uh industries that are fossil fuel dependent and creating these opportunities for um uh, you know, post Diablo, et cetera. So I think that it is uh interesting to see that piece of implementation of our climate action plan within economic recovery. And on this other side, I mean, not other side, it's all like that same triangle in terms of sustainability, urban forestry, and uh sustainable transportation. So but again, in some ways, it's semantic about where things go, but I think we're seeing the themes of uh wanting all those things to the themes of wanting all those things to merge and support each other.
Thank you. Mayor Harmon, did you, and then we'll come back, Councilmember Marks.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Pease. Yeah, so I think it is important to talk about the just transition that also includes the equity piece implicitly and also the economic challenges that this transition can present to certain sectors of our local economy. So I don't know if that needs to be specifically in the themed, in the goals statement itself, or if that's, you know, an underneath piece or what have you. And I did, yeah, Andy, I'm sorry, I forget if you asked me or wanted me to clarify something else here, but I do think to circle back to what we said initially also is to uplift our lead, our national level leadership on this topic as an, as a major economic opportunity and a major driver of innovation and entrepreneurship here.
Yeah, I think that, thank you. I think that that's what I was getting out of yours. In some ways, I feel like our climate action plan is just so well laid out, especially with kind of this framework of implementation in the Climate Safe California that just like keeping that going is going to necessarily trigger those equity, economic development kinds of potential. And I, I think you're spot on about renewed leadership that now's our opportunity to not just rest on prior success, but go forward.
And I think we can, and I would hope would be intentional in our telling of this story because we've been doing a lot of leadership things and I've just, I'm surprised, and again, talking with the chamber, why, why aren't we sort of more on the map in terms of this, this topic? And I think that there's a missed opportunity there. And, and as I just briefly mentioned, even like the anaerobic digester, which just sounds like a boring thing to involve, but as you all know, like that's, there's nothing like that anywhere else in the United States either. So like we have this, I feel like there's a, there's actually a big story that hasn't been told here yet that I think if we tell it and tell it well, like for example, I could see the PCC taking on some of this storytelling, right? So like even though that's traditionally been about promoting tourism, the whole point of tourism is on many levels to support economic vitality, could not they take on some of this, you know, promotion of our, our national level leadership on climate action if the, you know, and utilize that as an attractor for really exciting, innovative and integrous businesses here that would create well-paying jobs of meaning.
Thank you, Mayor Harmon. Councilmember Marks.
Yes, I just want to say that it is very important to a lot of, I'd say majority of the residents of the city that open space not be abandoned as unnamed, as part of the name of a major city goal. And the, the fear that it is going to be abandoned by this council is something that's real and that's out there. And perhaps it has to do with what Mayor Harmon is talking about, that we're not fully telling our story. So I just want you to know that I acknowledge the progress that has been made regards to open spaces by past councils. The question is, what is this council going to do? What are we going to do for the next two years? I think it's very important to also, if we're going to talk about the built environment, not just talk about alternate transportation. What I had put in, I split climate action into two things, the natural environment and the built environment and under essential services. One of the things that I'm talking about is, or no, actually it was under economic stability. Create energy and grid independence to prepare for an all-electric future, including battery storage, backup, solar, micro grids, pay out the, oh, you know, that, not the pension, we already did that one. But there's, you know, the green hub thing is, is a nice concept, but also we need to talk, I think part of climate action is creating resiliency in terms of the grid because we're also dependent on the internet right now and we sure, for sure know it. But if the internet go, if the grid goes down, no matter how many electric cars you have, if they can't power up, you can't evacuate if there's a wildfire. So I think there, there is a, if, if you're going to talk about consolidating climate action into one goal, please include open space in the, in the title of it to show that we are continuing our commitment and that we're not just only focusing on the built environment. So I'm going to stop right there.
Thank you. Can we go? Oh, yes, Eric.
I, I just wanted to operate a few things because as I've listened to the conversation, just perhaps some details would be helpful as you move into crafting, just by, by weak way of reminder. The climate action plan calls for the continual updating of, of the plan in updating our greenhouse gas inventory. You recall the council deciding to do that in aligning with the financial plan. So we were always continuing to center our work on what was most effective, given the chat changing and rapid environment. And to Mr. VM's points this morning, we've had that conversation already as a team, much broader than just climate, about the change in the administration and not knowing what the next two to four years will bring and making sure we have carved out space and time to be able to adapt and to adjust the opportunities. So I, you know, we're going to, we're going to do that as part of the work program so that if something comes up for housing or DEI or for climate, that we're, we don't have such a baked work program that when the council says, hey, are we doing this? We say, oh, we can't do that because we've already done a full work. So we're trying to give some flexibility so that as things come down from the federal government, and I do think that they will, particularly on the climate front, given that there's discussion about shifting $3 trillion of tax incentives that were given to oil and gas, there's going to be some opportunities. You may recall that in the last financial plan, I think that overall it was about, about close to $300,000 more for urban forestry. And that was 100, 150 just for trees and then some additional staff. We had a retirement this year and we're in the process of looking at what's our most effective way to deliver the urban forest program that we want to have in, in the future. I also just note that open space, natural resource preservation has been a priority in local revenue measure since 2014. It is a pro, proposed priority for G20 funding and hence why we bake that into the, into the budget that was presented in the forecast last year. Speaking of the digester, it, it has been featured quite often and maybe everyone hadn't got, it got caught in Sunset Magazine, it got caught, it's been, it's been, it's had a lot of publication, but I think to your point, Mayor Harmon, wrapping this up about a story in San Luis Obispo is the key piece. We've been recognized as a world, national, regional, statewide leader in so many areas. And it's getting together to tell a story about what that all means and why San Luis Obispo is important. Certainly that could be something with our new communications manager, which we just added on Tuesday, can help us tell that story into the future. And then lastly, about grid redundancy, I will share with you that there's a lot of space happening in three CE and Councilmember Marks and Councilmember Stewart are both going to play a role. I was just, I'm, I serve on the executive board. We were just in the process of developing our goals for our CEO for the next year. These ideas are making it into the goals for the, for the CEO because they are now, they are a utility that expands all the way from Santa Cruz County down to Santa Barbara County. They have, you know, the, the power of purchases and influencing market decisions at the, you know, billion dollar level. Um, you know, we're frequently making transactions in the hundreds of millions of dollars. And so that is a really key tool from my perspective on redundancy of the internet. We, right now, many of you know, we're, there is new technologies that are coming to San Luis Obispo, 5G is likely going to come, which is equivalent of wifi. We have other providers that are coming into the market as well. AT&amp;T will, is, is a, is a provider that's coming into the, the market on the internet. And so I just wanted to share that information with you as you start to craft the goal.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Pease.
And maybe you're heading this direction to whatever your draft is. I, I, I think that the, I would be open to, I've gone back and forth, but climate action and open space as a shared goal. I think that there is so much that is, you know, within the climate action plan, there's natural solutions that talks about the sequestration. And at the same time, I think that the reflection that the community, that there is definitely, that is in such a high value to be able to understand that the naming of open space for many people encompasses so much more than that. It's about views, it's about habitat, it's about wellbeing. And by, perhaps by having it in the, the title of the goal, even though it's what we all mean, what we feel has been operationalized, it does reflect a listening to concerns that are being shared. So I, I would be open to that.
Thank you, Councilmember Pease. So I, I put up here the draft goal statement. I do want to comment that it sounds like maybe there is some openness. Councilmember Marks added this, as well as I think Councilmember Christensen supported and Councilmember Pease, that maybe the title becomes climate action and open space. So we have that representation. Councilmember Christensen, you did point out, I apologize for not stating this, that this is different in that it adds in the alternative and sustainable transportation element, which had been an additional goal that had been stated by one member here. Councilmember Christensen, yes?
Yeah, I just, I did want to reiterate that I do support adding the words climate act, open space into the climate action title. And I'll, I'll tell you why, not only for the reasons that Councilmember Marks and Councilmember Pease just reiterated, to basically, you know, have a clear communication with the community, which has, apparently has really wanted this. But I, I have to say that in my own mind, I have always, when I think climate action, I think clean air, clean water, green hills. You know, preserving that and making our world stay livable is kind of where I go. And since here somebody keeps saying, we keep talking about the built environment, that is not for me, climate action. Climate action is exactly the open space piece. So I, I do believe that part of this is the continuing education, communication piece and the fact that I, for me, this council, as it was reiterated in the previous iteration and the one that we have right now, one of the things we talk a lot about, and it goes back to the diversity and inclusion discussion also, and the economic stuff, we, we are all one. We, whether we like it or not, we're all connected, what one of us does affects the others. And, and that's, you know, when I think about the climate accent piece, that is on a, you know, literally on a global scale. So, so I, I'm, I'm happy to, you know, put that in there and, and, but I just want to be clear that to me, climate action is, is not about the built environment only in any way, shape or form. It, it, you know, we've talked about, it, it includes very much the, the natural environment that I know our, our community has always been passionate about. So I just want to be real clear about that.
Vice Mayor Stewart and then Mayor Harmon.
Well said. Councilmember Christensen, I, one, I am fine with adding open space to the name of this goal. When I think of San Luis Obispo, I think of the green hills and the, the open space that we have solidified, I think of the great weather and the fact that we have worked hard to maintain and gain water. This, you know, as I, as I look at climate action, I'm thinking of the whole entire body of not just our city, but globally as well. And so for me, it would never be a separate issue. It is all intertwined. And I know all of these issues are somewhat intermingled, but I, I think this is, this is one that is kind of one in the same. So thank you for that clarity.
Thank you. Thank you. And I asked Teresa if you can pull up that shared document. We'll listen, we'll hear from Mayor Harmon and then Councilmember Pease, and then maybe we can start editing that, the wording. Mayor Harmon.
I'm good. You can go to Andy.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Pease?
I was wondering if there was interest, especially with the expanded title of this one, to modify that first sentence, "in response to the climate crisis and to promote community wellbeing." Continue to update.
I see a thumbs up. So in response to the climate crisis and...
To promote community wellbeing or support community wellbeing. Probably support.
Support, yeah. Support instead of promote, Teresa.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is there an aspect of this that is education as well, when you say community wellbeing?
Well, how, how do you mean?
Well, what I'm, what I'm hearing is from some of this earlier part of the discussion and even in the community at large, the lack of knowledge, not just what we're doing, but what is happening in slow that affects their community wellbeing, I think is important to know. Obviously, the recent addition of the communication director is going to help us quite a bit. Thank you so much, Derek. And it seems like there's something that needs to kind of come into this space around actual education for those who feel that they don't understand what this means, they don't, they don't...
Yeah, yes, yes. I think that's, that's exactly right. It's interesting because at some point when I was, you know, looking at goals and trying to reframe and thinking in particular about our active transportation plan and short-range transit and, you know, downtown vitality and all these pieces, I was coming up with a goal, goal that was like loving the slow life or, you know, something that was just like, hey, we're doing these great things that are going to really make, you know, continue to make San Luis Obispo, San Luis Obispo the special place that it is. Oh, and by the way, it fits into our climate action plan and our economic recovery, you know? Kind of with that. I felt like that was going to be harder for us to actually figure out the steps for implementation. But yeah, I think that, that there is so much that we're doing that is just good for our community overall. And so, yeah, if we can kind of communicate from that directive, tell that story, you know, educate.
Can I clarify, is that an element that you'd like to see in the actual goal statement? Or is that maybe one of the, the bullets that we list as part of the education, telling of the story piece?
That's what I was going to say, is that that would be more of a preface kind of thing. And I wanted to suggest that instead of saying community wellbeing, if we would say quality of life for everyone, just signal the inclusivity that we want to see in terms of the human use of our open space. I think that'd be a good idea. That's why I was trying to say, again, I put recreational in there with DEI. So, you know, I think it's really important. A lot of our residents of color are coming from urban areas. Perhaps they're students at Cal Poly or Questa and they may not, this may be the first time that they've really had the opportunity or the awareness that they, that they can take a trail in open space and like that. So that's, I would just like to suggest, rather than community wellbeing, that we talk about quality of life for everyone.
So potentially in response to the climate crisis and...
I hate putting quality of life in things.
You hate it?
I hate it. It's too vague. It's too, it's too vague. It means different things. It just, it's like, I mean, yeah, we all want quality of life, but my quality of life and your quality of life, it's kind of like talking about noise, you know? My definition of noise is your definition of music. So it's just, it, you know, I know where we're getting and it's really nice, whether you need to put it into a major city goal, I don't know. Just, you know, it gets a little... Just, you know, it gets a little, it's getting a little fuzzy, a little touchy-feely out there for a goal that our staff's supposed to implement.
I mean, do we even need any of that? Do we even need to say in response to the climate crisis, first of all, isn't that like?
Exactly.
You say in support of community well-being, can't we just get to the specifics of it? And if updating the Climate Action Plan is embedded in the process of the Climate Action Plan, then does that need to be there? Did we already decide that's going?
I think we need to include the update so that people understand it's a living document. There are people who won't read the Climate Action Plan or even know about what it means, but they will definitely be reading these major city goals. These are very important.
So Mayor Harmon, I hear you suggesting that maybe that entire first part comes out, and it just starts with continue to update and implement the Climate Action Plan for carbon neutrality, blah, 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 blah.
Yeah.
So it gets to what the goal is, not the reason for the goal?
I like that.
Yeah, that's fine. The only reason I was adding the other was because of the first, but yes.
Okay, got it.
Good job. Get rid of some words.
When in doubt, when in doubt, leave it out. That's something as an English teacher I used to always say, so good for you.
Vice Mayor Stewart?
I don't mind taking out, I just was keeping consistency with everything we've done. We've said why in the heck we're making this goal. And that's keeping consistent with this one would keep consistent with the rest of the goals. But if we think that everyone just assumes that climate action is a great thing, which we know that not everyone in the world does, then I think it's important to keep it in. But I'm also not like married to it.
Maybe we, you know, this is when we start to get into the syntax of goal writing, right? How they all start and whatnot. So maybe when we look at all of them in conjunction, that'll be.
Yeah, I want to see them all together, and it may make sense to put it back in there in response to the climate crisis. But I would stop it in response to the climate crisis, just because, you know.
Yeah, excellent. So how about we, are we living, we can live with this piece at this point? Okay, so I wanted to just highlight for you, I will go ahead and share my screen because I think we have, we have an opportunity now to determine if we are going to shift to the prioritization activity or if we feel like we have enough alignment on these goals and have incorporated the other goal statements enough that we can move, we don't actually need the prioritization.
Well, let's look at them first, and then we'll tell you how's that.
I'm sorry?
Let's look at them all together at once, and then we can respond to your question.
Yeah, I disagree. I think, I think what Summer is saying is let's look at what we haven't incorporated, right? Is that what you're saying, Summer?
Yes.
I'm happy with what we have. These are, these are the four goals I put in. I didn't put five out there, so I think we've covered it.
Right, I feel like four is.
Happy to listen to other ideas.
No, don't, don't have five?
No, we have four because we combined housing and homelessness. Mayor Harmon?
Yeah, so maybe this is a good time to bring up what I think is really important also. Not as a separate major city goal, but the fact that we need to create some more spaciousness within all work programs for emerging concerns and ideas is, I feel like we've created a culture of no at council that, and it makes sense. We have this unprecedented challenge with COVID and all of these huge, you know, efforts happening. And so of course, we're focused on that. And I'm concerned that, that there's no space, resources for either what might naturally come up unexpectedly and/or for the community to feel like there's any room to make a new suggestion. Like even like this dog park, little dog park idea that's percolated a little bit over the last couple of weeks in the major, in the school setting process, for example. You know, things like that, that may, one of us or the community may really want to, you know, have something new come through in the next couple of years. And I think it's important that we create that spaciousness in general. And whether that's a special projects manager position and/or within each separate work program, there's room for emerging and emergent concerns and ideas, I think is really important in and of itself, but also so that we just have a more openness at council. When people come to council with an idea or a concern, the immediate response is not, no way, no how are we even going to entertain this thought that you're having, community, because there's just no way. So anyway, I just feel like that's important to weave into our conversation here before we kind of wrap this all up.
Thank you, Mayor Harmon. Councilmember Christiansen?
Well, in terms of supporting the idea that probably, that I feel satisfied that the four major city goals that we've articulated are, give a good comprehensive direction to moving the city's budget and staff towards work programs over the next two years, that we're kind of there. So, but we can take a look at all of them together and see, and see what the other things were that were suggested and see how they fit into what we have or have not done. But I have to say that in terms of, you know, making room for, you know, more things is that, you know, the watchword still is discipline and focus, and it needs to be in order to get work done. The one thing that I've learned over the many years of activism is that if you, you know, let yourself be distracted by, no matter how good of ideas they are, you will be distracted and you will not get to the end of the work that you've planned to do. So I get the concept of building in some space, especially with regard to known things we know are coming down the road, like we know our federal government's going to be doing all kinds of things with transportation and climate change, and probably and hopefully housing and mental illness and those kinds of things too. But, you know, if you have a special projects person there and they're supposed to have, quote, free time to add things in, that's not the way taxpayers like their city money to be used. People who sit around waiting for something to do. And if they have something to do, then if you, then by definition, every time you add something, you're adding on top of somebody who's already working. So I just want to be careful about, about going in that direction, Mayor, because I think that it's tempting and it sounds really good. I think, as you guys have heard me say before, there are ways to talk with community and constituents about new ideas and about new work especially, not just ideas, but things that require effort, coordination, time, many departments, that don't sound like no, but that sound like let's work on it this way or that way, which we have done several times very successfully. So we know it can be done, and we know we can do more things without it sounding like no, but also without adding a lot of time and money to already full work programs. So that's my little thing, and we'll continue on.
Thank you. Councilmember Marks?
Yes, I, I think, I certainly understand what the mayor is saying from, you know, the point of view of someone who comes up with a really neat idea and wants the city council to drop everything and do that really neat idea. But, you know, on the, on the other hand, we are still in a time of uncertainty. We don't know how long the COVID is going to last. To me, these next two years, it's about healing, it's about resiliency. It's, and in that context, there may be new ideas or initiatives that come forward. And I believe the city manager was also talking about the need to retain the ability to be nimble and, and aware of the changing environment, you know? So I think that's built in. Also, we really don't know what the budget is going to be like. So I wouldn't see that as earmarking something as part of the major city goals. But when we are doing the actual budget conversations that are coming up, we should be asking those questions of staff at that time. Like how much resiliency is there built into this particular thing that we're looking at or into this particular department? So I'm not willing to go there right now. I'd like to see those four goals that we've formulated so far and then see if there's anything that needs to be, possibly a couple of words that need to be added or another concept that needs to be added or something that needs to be taken out. So I don't want to stop right now. I want to keep going and see what we've come up with already.
Okay, before we do that, Vice Mayor Stewart and I think Councilmember Pease also had a hand up.
I appreciate the flexibility aspect, and I do agree, Councilmember Marks, that City Manager Johnson did mention that earlier, and I think that'll be great to have a little bit of flexibility when we can. I think actually this last year in the pandemic was a great example of when we do have to swap things at times. And I think the important part, it's not so much a no, it's that we say, what else are we willing to give up? What else are we going to not do so that we can do A? And, you know, sometimes I ask the questions of staff members. Okay, well, what are we not going to do for that $32,000 that you need for this one project? What are we taking away? And those are the kinds of questions that we as the council member can continue to keep asking because maybe a different project is a better idea that goes within the work plan as long as it goes within the major city goals. And I mean, as far as the dog park, we've got parks in Rec, there's plans around dog parks and potential opportunities. So again, is it that we need to swap something? You know, we, we aren't, while we do want to have focus and discipline, we also aren't so rigid that if the best opportunity in the world comes, comes to us, that we're not willing to make some sort of changes and shifts. So just wanted to.
Thank you. Councilmember Pease?
I don't know if this is a process question, and then I saw City Manager Johnson unmute. My question is that I have maybe six or so work program types of things I'd like to be able to say out loud. I don't know that they, any of them go folded into the naming of a goal, but I want to make sure. So should I go through those now or wait until after we've settled on the goals themselves? And I say that in case any of them should get into a goal.
Yeah, thank you for that. So the thought here would be, and I want to see what City Manager Johnson has to say here, but the thought here would be that we would put up the four goals as they currently are looking to be outlined and can then highlight any kind of key steps you'd like for staff to keep in mind related to those goals. So that's a little more of that specificity piece, so that we can capture that and it can work to incorporate as much of that as possible into the work planning that they're going to do over the course of the next two months. City Manager Johnson?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I just wanted to hop in a little bit and talk about the intent of a special projects manager. It is a position that I've talked about at great length with the leadership team, and I think I've spoken with many of you individually. I think of the special projects manager, you may recall, Councilmember Marks, we had that position. We, when times were tough and the budget was thin, we converted that position to the sustainability manager. It is really a position from my perspective to deal with the unknown mandates that come in that we can't say no to. And if we have to, and that we, that we have to address, such as the California Voting Rights Act is an item, for example, that comes forward. And that right now, the way that that works is it results in a trade-off in our work programs. So we end up reducing our work programs. So, and then, and then there's the ones that are of discretion and, you know, whether it's a dog park or it's a flavored tobacco ordinance, for example. And so those are the ones where you have discretion, but sometimes there just isn't the discretion. We have to do it, and there was no way we could have predicted that it was going to happen. And so you're likely going to see a budget request just to give us that resiliency and flexibility to be responsive because I think as many of you have pointed out, we don't see that going away in the future. And I have no doubt that that position will not sit idle by any means. It will have either things that we're asking it to do because we're required or it's helping out with the other things that are on the work program.
Thank you. So Teresa, if you want to go ahead and pull up the document you've been crafting that lists the four goals and that vision that we had in the 1921, while she's doing that, I'll just highlight for you that the other elements that were listed are really in relation to sustainable transportation, which we had made the decision to incorporate that, and at least at this point. And then there was one around essential services, climate action and infrastructure, and then community repair. So the question here would be, does the list that Teresa's posting up right now, does this incorporate enough of those? And that we would be in a place where we have enough consensus that we don't need to engage in the prioritization activity at this point. And we would move now to highlighting or providing some more detail, either in the wording of these and/or in some of those programmatic elements that you'd like to highlight to give staff clarity on where you'd like to see them focusing attention. So that first piece there, this was taken from the 1921 kind of vision statement that was listed. We've put that in here so that you can see that if you'd like to wordsmith that from a lens by which to view these, all of these goals. And then we have four, at this point, four major city goals, as you can see, as we've wordsmithed those. Councilmember Christiansen?
I do not want to do any more wordsmithing. I give leave anybody to change a word here and there, you know, and just kind of smooth out the grammar. I would preferably like to hear people's idea of work programs. They'd like to, they'd like, what they, you know, imagine to go into these things because I think we, that's the piece we haven't actually heard much about. And I do believe it is helpful to staff, as they've said, you know, in terms of them matching these big goals to actual work programs. So I'd rather just move on to that and not, you know, not go over time and not spend a lot more time wordsmithing these, you know, to every comma or whatever. That's just me.
Okay, Mayor Harmon, then Councilmember Pease, and then Councilman Marks.
The thing I'm concerned about is the dropping off of sustainable transportation as its own major city goal. I see and I appreciate that it's incorporated into climate action, which also makes sense. I, I think there's just been, there's been a lot of hard-fought momentum on some of the pieces of those work programs. And I'm, I would feel concerned that it's going to somehow either actually drop off or at least in the perception of the advocacy community in terms of other mode, mode shift folks and all of that. If, how that's going to land for a part of our community that's advocated really consistently and to get some more substantial mode shift, if that is going to feel like a drop off of focus. Derek, did you have your hand up on that?
I was just going to, if you, if you might, it is a huge part of our capital program. I don't think that it's omission in the title will change the alacrity by which we pursue projects, and that'll be embodied in the capital improvement program. You just took a huge step earlier this week on the adoption of the Active Transportation Plan, which I think is one of the more forward-thinking plans that we've seen in, in the United States for the most part. And so I think that embodies it, and we understand that that's the intent. And so as you, as you drive down to the outcomes, I think that would be helpful for us because then we can really take that cue in developing the work program.
Okay, thank you for that, Derek.
I just want to just throw in there because I appreciate your comments, Mayor. The other thing is to throw in on that climate action goal, climate action, open space and sustainable transportation. Just put them all in there because they are totally connected.
As a title?
Yeah, that would be good.
Because your point about sustainable transportation is the same point Councilmember Marks was making about the open space. Though I was going to say climate action, open space and sustainable transportation.
Great. Thank you, Teresa.
To me, that really, it's in the title and it, it names it because it's, and it's an absolutely key component to where we're going with our climate action work programs.
Councilmember Pease?
I, you know, if there's consensus, not that big deal. I feel like the sustainable transport, you know, then it starts to, and clean energy. You know, I mean, like how far do we name every aspect of that program? And it is. And it is so critical as part of our climate action plan that we implement that sustainable transportation that that, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me to add it in there. And I think it kind of dilutes the open space piece of it personally. But if others, you know, I don't think it matters a whole lot. So I would personally take out, I wouldn't add in sustainable transportation. What I was going to say is just as we were talking about kind of the collaboration and leverage on housing and homelessness, it made me want to circle back to that first goal where City Manager Johnson mentioned about where we talk about local partners, about going ahead and naming local and regional because I think that does embrace kind of the reach effort and makes it more clear what we're really talking about.
On that note, before we go, Councilmember Marks to you, I wanted to comment that I know we don't want to get into more wordsmithing here, but in the intention to have these really have parallel structure, I think there is an opportunity to cut out some of the opening comments in the top two and reference in that, in the opening paragraph, a little bit more to clarify there. It has regionalism, but maybe it has something about local partners so that it does take out the opening line for both.
Oh, so sure. So just go to continue to support, continue to support, drop out that first part, sure.
Yeah, yes. Exactly, Teresa. And then same for DE and I, it would start with continue to develop programs and policies to support equity, diversity, equity and inclusion initiatives.
No, 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 no.
I think that one's different.
Hey, you guys, I have my hand up. I'm going to be assertive here. I just want to say we either need to keep, to craft some introductory phrases for housing and homelessness and climate action or eliminate them altogether. And I think, again, in terms of the public perception, it would be helpful to add the introductory, an introductory phrase both to housing and homelessness and also to climate, climate action plan.
I would rather go in that direction because I think that the diversity, equity and inclusion is a brand new major city goal. We've never had anything like it. I think it's really important to have that introduction in there. And if you want to, I don't really care if they're consistent personally, but I.
Well, the city manager, the city manager has requested peril.
Yes, I think the point is well made. So, you know, be my guest. I don't care that much what they are.
So the feedback would be that we keep some opening and maybe that's something that the city staff could take and do some work around. Hey, Vice Mayor Stewart?
I agree. I think people need to understand why in the world we're making these goals. There's some history and some knowledge behind it and this is a, you know, five words, but at least it kind of points someone to where this came from. And I think that's important.
Excellent. Thank you. So at this point, do we feel that these are, we have a, we have alignment on these four goals with the understanding that there would be some cleaning up that would happen by city staff on the, some wording, grammar, whatnot, and that we then do not need to engage in the prioritization activity? But instead we would shift to outlining some more. Teresa could go under each one and we could bullet what some of the elements you'd like to see in those work programs that staff then will be working on to determine the how to deliver these over the next two years. Does that seem reasonable?
Yes. And I just would like to say that even if we are talking about different outcomes now, I also would request that as staff looks at these goals down the line, that we are presented with a menu of possible outcomes that perhaps just today, kind of on the fly, we haven't been able to really consider. So I'd like to have this be, these outcomes to be kind of like a first draft kind of outcomes.
Thank you for that. Yeah.
And just to clarify, just to put a pin on this, is the intention with the wordsmithing that will happen, our intent is to come back to the council at your meeting on the consent calendar on the 16th and have you just affirm whatever changes we've made to them so that you have some time to sit with the language and for the council to affirm whether or not the slight changes we make or that the whole council's comfortable with.
Excellent. And Councilmember Marks, I just want to echo because the staff won't say this on their own behalf, that I think that is exactly accurate, that we are incorporating ideas, thoughts that you have and that you have from community input and that the experts that we have on staff then will also highlight what ought to be in that work plan. Vice Mayor Stewart, you had a hand up.
I just wanted to make sure I understood. Did you say consent agenda, Derek, versus?
Correct. You've got a full council meeting on the 16th and so, and so if it gets pulled off consent, there's slight, some slight adjustments. We'll see, we'll make a judgment call of whether or not there are enough to where they need to be its own agenda item and you'll be the judge of whether we get that right or not.
Okay, I would just imagine we'd have some comments, knowing all of us.
Okay, so we'll go with the first draft goal, economic recovery, resiliency and sustainability. And Teresa will take notes into a bulleted list of elements that you'd like to see incorporated in or considered in this work program as the staff works on this over the next two months.
Mayor, wasn't there kind of a start of this list? I feel like there were bullet points that you already had or researched on some of them, not on this one?
Right. This one there was not. The, this one actually has a lot of what maybe would have been in the bulleted list listed in the goal, related to like paying down unfunded pension liabilities and whatnot. There is a list we could start with that if you would like for DE and I and housing and homelessness.
That was my suggestion was could we at least just start with those so we're not reinventing the wheel again?
Yeah, there are not any on economic recovery, resilience and sustainability.
Well, yeah, but there's a question like, one thing I feel is really important, we're heading into a drought. It's like water resiliency. Does that go under economic recovery or does that go under climate action? Or, you know, so this is a problem of category.
That will happen anyway. We don't need to put that into a goal or a work plan. There's a lot of stuff, there's a lot of stuff we do now that, there's a lot of stuff we do now that we do it automatically. The major city goals are kind of to focus like extra firepower on there, not, not to just replace it about what the city does. The city's doing, you know, most of what we do is kind of like, it's embedded in our really amazing plans and policies. We've got all kinds of, you know, comprehensive plans. So anyway, it's, I think.
I mean, just in order to be able to get through this process, I wonder if it would make sense that we just go ahead and incorporate everybody's ideas without necessarily debating them. If there's something that we definitely don't want done, then we should chime in. But if we think it's, you know, already incorporated or not, I would say, although I wouldn't name water resilience necessarily, but there is actually currently a focused work effort to, because of the groundwater basin and the potential collaboration with farmers outside the city and blah, blah, blah. So there's, there is some additional work effort and the staff then has the flexibility about how to name that.
Yeah, so.
So what I, what I would, go ahead, go ahead.
Teresa, I think there on that bullet, I would say, you know, explore effective use of water consistent with general plan policies, you know, if I'm trying to get, catch your comment just right, Andy.
And like I say, I wasn't going to add that bullet, but I was just trying to respond to Jan.
Well, yeah, the whole issue of groundwater recharge and buying property to do that and yada, yada. I mean, there's a lot of, I think it is something that, and I agree that it's something we do anyway. But when we're looking at the fact that utilities is an enterprise fund, you know, if there's anything extra that needs to be done that can't be done within the enterprise fund, then many to measure G money. So that's why I brought it up.
I just want to frame this and then Councilmember Mees, Pease will come to you. This is, this is meant to be, if you think about that goal statement as being, this is what we'd like to get to at the end of this two years. What we want to document here is idea tangible steps that you see outcomes you'd like the staff to be working towards within that two-year timeframe. So these might be things that you were, when you wrote your goal statement, you listed that haven't made it into this goal statement, but they're important elements to the work program that you'd like to have highlighted here. So it doesn't need to be comprehensive. That's what the city staff will be working on. But to make sure that we get it highlighted in this, in this list here.
Well, back on, back on track to being, to paying down or unfended, or the fiscal health response plan or whatever. I can't remember the technical names for these things.
Fiscal health response plan.
Yes, that back on track with our fiscal health response plan is the main thing. And then, you know, hopefully they don't have a pandemic to deal with. And so economic indicators all up, downtown up. You know, I mean, this stuff is really technical and usually the staff comes up with better ideas than we have.
Yeah. And then that is, again, if it's not on here, it's not that the staff isn't going to be working towards it or putting it in the work plan. It's to capture items. You want to help make sure you provide clarity and direction. Councilmember Pease had her hand up and then we'll go to Mayor Harmon.
Thank you. I would like to explore a local workforce agreement, community workforce agreement or something like that. I would like to just name probably obvious, but Parklets and also the Mission Plaza restroom. I'd like to make sure that that stays moving forward. Childcare, support opportunities for childcare. Again, we've already been working on it, but keep that going. I'm not sure where to put this, but there's a loose end in our cannabis program is that community education apparently didn't get kind of married into that program in the beginning. We talked about each business entity needs to do their own, but we're not currently kind of taking that revenue and doing some education and awareness. So I'm not saying necessarily that we have to do that, but I would like to at least explore what's currently being offered. And are we, I think we have some responsibility to make sure that there is community education about cannabis potentially.
Yeah, we had a whole, we had a whole program, Andy, that was about to launch and then we got COVID.
Okay, so great. Sorry. Oh, and then just obviously, again, I don't know that it's particularly our role as much as county and state, but we are hearing loud and clear that there's a lot of concerns about rent relief. And it, maybe that goes under the housing, but I think it's actually under economic because just ways to understand and prioritize, like, gosh, maybe some things have to be on hold so we can just make sure that people have their basic needs met. And whether or not that's better coordination with our community partners who are collecting money for this type of thing. I don't know what that looks like, but kind of that basic life. That's all I have under this category.
Thank you. Mayor Harmon was next and then Councilmember Marks.
Thank you. Councilmember Pease mentioned several of the things I'm interested in. Childcare for sure. Community workforce agreements for CIPs of a certain level. And as I mentioned earlier, also a potential adoption of a program similar to what the city of Berkeley has done that is a support of worker co-ops. So they have developed some policies and programs to support the facilitation of worker cooperatives in, under their Office of Economic Development in coordination with other community partners. So I would love to see that potential explored.
Thank you. Councilmember Marks?
Thank you. Well, I'd like to see the Prado overpass completed within the next two years. And also what I talked about earlier, our dependency on the grid and PDNA will just turn it off whenever they feel the wind is too high to escape liability. So I think we need to talk about creating energy and grid independence to prepare for an all-electric future. And including leveraging other people's money, I don't want to say leveraging, any available resources to implement it. I think there's going to be money coming from a variety of different services, I mean, sources. But what we need to do is make sure that we've got our eye on the ball in terms of being able to actually get those resources into our community. Because once that grid goes down, the internet disappears. And not everybody's going to have a 5G phone, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to stop right there.
Thank you. Are we, is that a hand? Councilmember Christensen? Yes, it is.
Yes, I, besides the back on track with fiscal health response plan, it's important to mention Diablo and, you know, continued, continued solid deliverables on Diablo and preparing for its closure. And then I want to say something about the rent relief thing. I understand, I think I understand what Councilmember Pease was talking about, was suggesting and she did say that it may not be the city's direct, you know, purview, but I really want to make that specific that, you know, explore ways to, you know, support not only our renters, but our small landlords who are, you know, again, they have to pay their mortgages. So it's not just rent relief, it's economic recovery under, you know, after COVID. So, yeah.
Rent and mortgage relief.
Yeah, just, you know, and again, specifically not having the city provider, which I do not support, but just.
Matching programs.
Exploring, educating.
Advocating.
Yeah, just, I just wanted to kind of round that out.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Carolyn.
That's it.
Great. Thank you. Can we, oh, Vice Mayor Stewart?
All right. Thank you. You all have many of the comments I had. I would just say the education needs to be a really key part of that rent and mortgage relief because there's, there's actions now people can take around not being evicted that they don't necessarily understand or know. So I think going back to the communications person, they have a lot on their job of what to potentially communicate. However, a lot of this, we can do a lot of work, but if we don't actually communicate to different people.
For rent and mortgage relief.
I'm talking about the education. Yeah.
Education, okay.
I'm not talking about putting for general fund dollars into rent and mortgage relief. Personally, that's where I'm going. And I did want to say that, yeah, we're not going to get Prado built in two years. That's not happening.
And then on.
Well, I would like to just make sure that we push it along as much as we can.
Absolutely. There is, you're going to see items coming to the council even this financial year that are moving this project farther along than it's ever been. It's farther than it's ever been we've been, I think, we've ever gotten in the history of the city. Largely, it's related to just building a new overpass and getting it through the Caltrans process. Now, on energy and grid dependence, I want to just have a conversation about this. This is something that 3CE is working on. And so is the expectation that we're going to work with them to have them lead that effort? Or is the city going to do its own separate effort to try to create a separate grid and independence for the city of San Luis Obispo? Because that is something totally different and a very, very, very significant effort. And so I want to just unpack that so we're clear about what you mean.
Okay, well, I want independence rather than dependence. I don't want to create grid dependence. I want to create grid independence.
I think, Councilmember Marks and maybe Derek, you know, Councilmember Marks wasn't on the council when we first had the public safety power shut off. So we did talk about this quite a bit, Jan, and talked about the idea that we, you know, if that was going to happen, first of all, we wanted to push against that happening, but as a solution to wildfires. And we also wanted to be ready for wildfires, but we also wanted to make sure that we had some ability to survive for a while. So we started investing in things like generators for our water plant and those kinds of things, but. But we, and then, and then we explore, we're exploring this with, with community, with CCE, so Central Coast. So we, we kind of are already doing that. So I think your instincts are right on there, but I think the way you're putting it is terrifying our city manager.
Oh, he's a very brave and courageous. What about facilitating, what if, what, let me just finish. What about facilitating or leveraging funds for energy and grid independence? So you still, Teresa, please put the IN before that word.
Instead of dependence, independence.
Yes, IN, IND, there you go. Good. So no, I'm willing to try to leverage other people's money for, for this. And I know that there is money out there. It's just, I guess, actually, what I want to say is also to plan for it. I'd say, I'd say the planning is really important in the next two years. Maybe that's as far as we can get. But to ignore it, after, as we become more and more dependent and we're asking people to build all-electric homes, I think it's, we just can't pretend that the grid is going to be as stable and wonderful as we would like it to be.
Point well made and something we've discussed quite a bit already. And I think it's important, you're right, to keep, keep it on the, on the radar.
City Manager Johnson, do you want to respond to that? And then we'll move to Vice Mayor Stewart.
I just. I've been here for a long time, and I really want to interrupt, sorry. But this is my, this was my concern when we started this bullet process is I, I appreciated before having the work plan come to us and help us understand what was possible. We already know what's in process. And Jan, our Councilmember Marks seems to get kind of caught up because I remember being in that space before, even though she's been on the council before. It's, it's a fire hose right now of knowledge of what's been happening as long as she was off. So I just, I'm concerned about this section of bullets of what are we doing? Are we, I feel like the goal was guiding City Manager Johnson and the staff to come back to us and say, here's what we'll do. So I'm just really concerned as to what's occurring right now.
I would suggest to refocus on outcomes rather than the actual tactics. So some of that, there is outcomes. And so, you know, and so if I were to look at this, for example, and say an outcome might be on, provide more enhanced local worker opportunities, you know, like, you know, a community workforce agreement, that would be one of the tools. So if we, if it'd be helpful if you think about outcomes, what you're trying to achieve, then it helps us then really articulate, aha, we know the way, what we believe is the best way to do that. And if the tactic is wrong when we come back with strategic budget direction and work programs, then you'll let us know. And that's, I would say, really only if you are dead set on having a certain tactic be part of the work program that you really articulated.
Does that help Vice Mayor Stewart to keep us focused? If it's more that as opposed to tactics? Okay, okay. So City Manager Johnson, is this, is this enough? I know it's, I know it's enough. Is it clear enough, the list we have here? Do you need it to get focused up a level to outcomes at this point, on this one?
I, I think what I would say is I hear the outcomes are look at fiscal health, look at optimizing ways to maximize local employment, enhanced support and care for working families. And that, and so that would be, might be education and rent, about rent, mortgage relief, childcare. And then I would see also enhanced regional transportation. And I think the also, the other area would be minimizing impacts to slow residents as a result of, of dependence to the grid. I'm sorry, I'm trying to do this on the fly.
Okay, are you talking about the city contributing money to the RTA? Or when you talk about regional transportation?
I'm, I'm thinking about Prado Road overpass. I'm thinking about bicycle paths. I'm thinking about.
In the city, though, so I wouldn't say regional. I would just case regional because that sounds like we're going to finance buses going to Santa Maria or whatever.
Yep.
Okay. So I think let's, let's, it sounds like that has enough, the intention of this is to give enough clarity to staff to be able to focus attention in the work plan. So why don't we ask a slightly different question as we move to the DEI one? To say, what are the outcomes you hope to achieve with this goal in the next two years? The outcomes you hope to achieve with these, with this goal of DEI? Councilmember Pease.
Well, I think we should, you know, copy up those bullet points that you had before. But assuming that those are all in place, the one that I would want, there are a couple that I might want to add. And I'm trying to change up. Well, the, the piece that I want, and then we can come back into it, is to consider ranked choice voting for the 2022 ballot. I think that is more inclusive in terms of representation. And the other one would be.
Councilmember Pease and Madam Mayor, can I suggest that we make that a little bit more broad and consider cumulative or ranked choice voting options? Just so that, just so that you're not foreclosing specifically any alternatives? Thank you.
For 2022 ballot, is that okay, Christine?
I would, I would think that implementation would probably be more in the 2024 ballot. So we would, we would do.
So maybe just take out the year.
Yes, thank you.
You know, just take out for the ballot language, yeah. And then the other one within this one, it came out of the Cultural Heritage Committee that talked about looking at historic resources from a DEI lens. Big picture, I would like to see an update to our historic resources inventory. I understand that's a big lift. Maybe it's scoping it at this point and then putting it, the actual inventory into the next cycle. If we could get it in this one, great. But I think that the context of DEI is that we don't necessarily have the right policies that would include a broader review of what's historic and culturally significant.
Thank you. Was there another hand on this one? Councilmember Marks.
Yes, I'd like to explore the concept of a multicultural center in collaboration with Cal Poly and Questa. I've talked a little bit about this with the Cal Poly people. I don't think it's something that the city should be doing all on our own, but I think it, we have to recognize that a lot of people of color who live in our city are in some way connected with the educational institutions.
Okay, Councilmember.
And Questa Community College.
Teresa after Cal Poly and Questa Community College.
There you go.
Councilmember Christensen on outcomes.
Yeah, I'm not going to suggest anymore here because I think we have plenty of suggestions. But I also am going to say, I have no idea for any of these things. I just want to, I just want to be clear. My overall statement is that, you know, a lot of this stuff is way too much. A lot of it's stuff I don't, I just don't feel like we know what we're talking about. So when somebody says something like this, it's not that I say, oh, I don't want, I don't want to see that as an outcome. It's like, I'm not sure it's an outcome, and I don't, I don't know if I want to see it as an outcome. So I just, you know, this, we aren't having a discussion and getting three straw votes on these things. So it just is making me uncomfortable and it's making me go, I'm not going to, you know, I mean, I could give you opinion on every single one of them because you guys know, we all are good at giving opinions. That's what we do. But I just want to throw that out there that it's just not, this isn't useful to me. I know Derek thinks it's going to be useful to him, but it's maybe not so much because I'm not.
As we've gotten into it, it's become more, as I see this and I see the outcomes, I'm starting, my wheels are spinning going, okay, I'm going to have to reconstruct and I'm going to come back with a budget with trade-offs. We're going to be cutting.
Yeah, and I don't, you know, you're, that's what I'm saying is you're, you're sitting there going trade-offs. And I'm thinking, no, I don't want trade-off. I mean, maybe I do, but, but I don't know what I want. I don't know what we're trading off. And I don't know what I'm asking for. And I don't know, I'm just feeling super uncomfortable and not like this is helping me get to where I think our city wants to go. You know, because to me, this is about our community and our city. So when the, so when the DEI task force or anybody else thinking about this issue, is this what they're imagining? I don't know. You know, can we do this? I don't know. Do, do we have to give up other things in order to do it? I don't know. So I'm going to, this is not just for DEI. It's, it was, as I just said, for the ones after, so.
So maybe, I just, sorry, can I just chime in a response? Because I totally get, I feel like you and Councilmember Stewart are kind of expressing the same concern like, ah, this is making things worse. From my perspective, this is super helpful because we're committed, the five of us, to the actual content of the goals. And I feel like all we're doing is adding some ideas that are in the toolbox, toolbox for staff. None of these are, if they were essential for me, I would have put them into the actual goal, right? But these are just potential programs. If they can kind of fit together, still giving staff a lot of.
Yeah.
Open space. So, and I only have like two more, I swear. I just.
Well, I just, you know, it's like, I don't, but I, I appreciate, I, I love hearing your ideas, but every one of them I want to have a discussion round. I don't necessarily agree with any of them. So that's what I'm, I'm concerned that staff is going to take each of our individual inputs. And unless it's something we've already talked about, like, you know, Diablo closure preparation, they're going to think it's, that, that at least three of us are thinking, yeah, that's a great work program. It's a great outcome. I'm, I'm not saying that. I am not agreeing with that. I don't, I don't, I, I am not comfortable with, with saying that this is direction for staff. I'm, no. So I'm not hearing the ideas, but, so I just don't know where this is actually fitting in as far as I'm.
So if I had a suggestion, if we could just label, put a label before these things that says possible outcomes or outcomes to consider or something like that, so that it's clear. I appreciate what Councilmember Christensen is saying. And also, this is why at the very beginning of this discussion, I said we need to see a menu of, of outcomes or, you know, a work plan so that we, we, because these are ideas that have occurred to us or that we've heard like that. It's somewhat random what we're throwing out right now. And, and so before we actually make firm decisions, we need to know with the full ranges.
Staff is going to take them and actually come up with, you know, programs in a budget that fit them. So it's not, it, it just is not.
Yeah. I'd like to reframe this, reframe this for a minute.
It's 2:15. My brain is exhausted. I can't do this. I'm totally freaking out. The more we go, I'm just going, no.
Down, down.
No. So.
So City Manager, is, is Carlin correct in her perception about what staff is going to do? I'm hearing you.
My apologies. I think Councilmember Pease's, her qualification of what she was putting on the table was very useful. That these aren't dictates, that they're ideas. So that's very helpful. And we will come back with a balanced budget and, and work programs. And if you see something when we come back in April and you say, why isn't that in there? That was one of the ideas I brought up. I will say because it required trade-offs, and I'll just use this as an example. Either, we either are going to update the cultural resources or we were going to do our design guidelines. And we had to choose one or the other with the resources. And we chose design guideline because it's in our, in our housing element. And if you want to add cultural resources, then we're going to need to find a trade-off. I'm just using that as an example. I'm not saying that's what we'll come up with. But.
Okay, as long as you're way, as long as you're not taking this as a, you know, council majority is supporting each one of these. Many of them I really love to explore, but yeah, I'm not, I'm not supporting each one of them.
So I think, Vice Mayor Stewart, why don't you comment? And I have reframing for us.
Thank you. Yeah, I definitely hear you, Councilmember Christensen, around the, it's not as though there's three of us saying yes to all of these bullet points. So that does concern me. It's also, there's things like the five essential recommendations. Multicultural Center was part of that. So I feel like those five essential recommendations should be expanded here if we're going to use this as a tool of some sort. And then I do like the trade-offs notes in a sense, for lack of a better word, in the work plan of, we went with this versus this. I think this is, that would be helpful so people understand why we're not moving into one of these bullets. Because now we've said publicly, these are really important things to us all or to some of us. And then we won't be coming through with it. And I think that concerns me as well.
Thank you. So I'd like to, I'd like to clarify that I think part of what we, what we've ended up bulging here are really suggested actions potentially for staff to take their tasks as opposed to what we were really trying to get to, which are outcomes related to these goals.
We don't know what outcomes are. We don't, we don't, you know, we don't know. We don't know.
Carlin, Carlin. I mean, not to be offensive, but let's, let's let her finish and then we can wrap up.
Right.
So I, I would like to suggest that the goal statements that we have really do have, they've been done very collaboratively. We have a lot of alignment in those. And they do give good direction to the staff on what you'd like to see as a focus within those. I'd like to ask City Manager Johnson if he feels like there is enough in those goal statements to, for the staff to go to create the work programs at this point? Or if you feel like you need more direction within these?
Absolutely. Those are, those are really helpful, I think. And if the council's inclined to, to continue the last two, if there's anything else to share, I think those are helpful. I'm understanding they're not absolutes. They're suggestions. And.
Right. So it sounds like we may have a couple more that we'd go ahead and put as potential steps, right? That we're saying there's not agreement that these are, need to be in the work programs, but they are ideas to highlight for the staff to see how those could be incorporated. Are there any additional pieces people would like to put in related to housing and homelessness, climate action? Please, we had Councilmember Marks and then Mayor Harmon.
I'd just like to add, explore funding for wraparound mental health and social services to partner with the police. And as made possible by leveraging county, state, and federal funding. That has to do with more the unhoused population than providing housing, but I don't know where else to put it, so.
But isn't that specifically already understood to be the county's responsibility?
Yes.
So we are not taking that on because that, we've had a lot of discussion about that already. What we are taking on is what, and Derek, correct me if I'm wrong, is that one of the essential aspects of our new homeless coordinator will be to ensure that the county does its job, which is exactly that. So through the transitive property of our homeless coordinator, we will be pursuing wraparound services by holding the county and, and other, and maybe the state, but primarily the county responsible and accountable for its responsibility to provide those wraparound services.
And, and Madam Mayor, whoops. Madam Mayor, I, I think to your point, yes. And I could see, for example, a work program coming back of, we're going to add an additional social worker. And this one we're going to pay for as, as, by the city, and we're going to partner with TEMA. We may partner with Capslo to expand 40 Prado. We may look at as part of our strategic plan, you know, on the continuum of housing, is there, is there a niche that's missing that we need to try to work with the county to fill? So I understand that's all on the table, but it's based on partnership and not necessarily, necessarily the city taking the lead in each instance.
Right, that's included in the, in the language itself. So I'm willing to. Right. That's included in the, um, in the language itself. So I'm willing to withdraw the specific example.
Thank you. Councilmember Mayor, you were next. I mean, Mayor Harmon, you were next.
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to, um, there's a lot I'd like to add into climate action, but I just wanted to add in the, um, consideration of a ballot measure, the likes of which a lot of other cities have done, and which I sent an email out for context, um, to be included on the 22, um, ballot that would be a funding mechanism specifically for further climate action slash open spaces, sustainable transportation potentially for that, for that major city goal.
Okay. Teresa, do you need her to repeat that? Oh, you've got it. Okay. Will you say it again, Mayor Harmon, just so we can make sure we capture the language correctly?
Sure. I, it's my, I mean, I didn't articulate it very well. I, and I did send out an email to the council, all email, it, with some examples of, so I guess it, the, the, it to consider the, uh, moving forward with a ballot initiative in 22 that would be a, create a funding mechanism specifically for further climate action.
Excellent. Thank you. Thanks, Teresa. Okay. Councilmember Christensen.
Yeah, I just.
Then we'll go back to Pease.
We just had the housing homelessness ones, and I think that we had a bunch of bullet points that you'd already collected that we, I just wanted to ask if those we put back up. Those were specific ones. The one, they were included in my major city goals, edu- as educational. And they were specific ones I came up with after speaking to various staff about things that were possible options. So.
Excellent. Teresa, the, the, the bullets that were in the housing and homelessness goal from earlier, that draft, we can pop those in. There was some language there about, which we'll need to tweak a bit around the wraparound.
No, not, yeah, not, not the wraparound stuff. I mean, the thing, I had him in mind.
I know. They're in there. They're in there, but there was also one about.
Wraparound services, that term is used very much so for the stuff that the county funds. I think Mayor Harmon was totally right. We really want to stay away from, try, from confusing people about what the city does versus what the county does. And adding a one position or advocacy piece or whatever, different than anything to do with provision of wraparound services. That is, you cannot go down that path.
I think we want to, on that, Teresa, we want to remove that third bullet. That was the, um, up on housing homelessness. Cause I think that one was, we already talked through and agreed to remove that. Councilmember Marks and then Councilmember Pease, did I get that backwards?
Have we moved on to, uh, to climate change and open space? Or are we still on?
Yes, we're bouncing between the two. Was there anything though on housing and homelessness?
No, housing thing, oops, sorry. I had just one, one more that, um, Derek mentioned it actually earlier. It went to finish up the pieces that we didn't get to on this, on this year's goals, uh, because of COVID, like the design guidelines and a couple of those kind of catch up stuff we were going to do to facilitate housing during this thing. Yeah.
They're objective, objective, um, design guidelines.
Councilmember Pease, did you have anything on housing and homelessness?
Yes, please. Thanks. Um, then, um, and first I want to apologize, uh, to, uh, Councilmember Christensen for my short remark earlier, not, not how I like to roll, so sorry about that. Um, and I really appreciate the list that is up here already. And the one that I want to highlight or maybe reframe is about the cahoots. As far as the outcome is like explore efficient public safety, delivery of public safety services, e.g. cahoots. Um, because in this case, it talks about specifically, um, financial support from the county, but I think it would need some kind of leadership objectives from us. I think that could be a really cost effective program for us in the long run. And I think we have heard kind of overall support, I think, from all of us for that type of thing.
Thank you. Anything else in housing and homelessness?
Yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Stewart, please.
Thank you. I think, um, funding the social worker position is also similar to a tactic versus an outcome. I think between cahoots and social worker and the wraparound that was earlier, I think there is an aspect that we're not, we don't want to lose, which is supporting that work, right? Supporting the county, the nonprofits, non-government organizations to provide more social worker, um, help to look at growing position, uh, programs like cahoots. I mean, we're, we're really, we want to see all these things happen, but it's really about supporting the other partners we have. So I'm just going to throw that out there. Um, and then I think we've really, we talk about additional capacity and programs at 40 Prado, but again, is it 40 Prado? Or, you know, we keep talking about housing. There's also that transitional housing aspect that are we looking at larger capacity or larger support for programs like 40 Prado? So I'm, I'm kind of confused as to where we're going with a tactic versus the outcome there.
Okay. So specific to that fourth bullet, the fund capital needs for additional capacity and programs at 40 Prado, that's the one?
Yeah. I'm, I'm curious from my council members where they were going with that. Is it, is it that it's specifically 40 Prado?
Things like, you know, help, like, you know, you notice it says cap- uh, capital. That's things like when they wanted to put the, um, the.
Detox.
Detox?
I've lost all vocabulary. They wanted to put the place where you had the detox. Yes, the detox. Thank you. They wanted to put the detox there and they didn't have the money. So we could give them an extra hundred thousand or whatever.
Right.
That's what I mean.
So detox is different than, or those programs are different than additional transitional housing. So I'm just wondering, are we, are we, I feel those are two different things.
But no, but see, we, in our tent, in our, in our area, there is no place for people to live while they do that. It's a type of transitional housing.
Oh, I very much understand. My, my point being if we're talking about outcomes, are we, do we want to help people in additional transitional housing as well, based on our increase in, in, um, people who are unhoused in the last couple of years? We don't, we're not necessarily building a house for them all or, or encouraging a house for everybody.
Transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, all kind, you know, group housing, SROs. You name it. All those kinds of, kind of different, non, non-three bedrooms and two bathrooms on a little plot of land housing.
But I think if all of those are kind of combined, that would make more sense to me.
Now, if I could clarify, the design of, of, um, 40 Prado was for a capacity that could go up to 200 people. So it's been built so that the present 100, uh, capacity could actually be, I think, almost doubled. And so if that's going to happen, uh, the need is there, if that's going to happen for, in whatever context, um, they're going to need, um, you know, some more money. And they also need operational too. Now whether that all comes from the city is another question. But if we're going to really address homelessness, um, or unhousededness, um, but we have to have a place to put people. And hopefully that is always transitional housing. I mean, the, the turnover there is enormous. So that's my understanding of what that means. Is that correct, uh, um, City Manager? I see you nodding your head.
That, that's correct. Absolutely. I, I, I see a key role that the city can play to help expand the capacity at, uh, 40 Prado. As you pointed out, Councilmember Marks, the original design was for up to 200 people. Today it's only at 100. Um, you know, they've been averaging about 28, uh, vacancy or beds a night, uh, that have been vacant. We know that that is not enough. And so I'd love to explore, one, creating additional capacity and whether or not there's new capacity that could have different types of, um, barriers, so to speak, for entry than there is today. So make sure we're serving as many people as possible.
So. Vice Mayor Stewart?
Totally hear what you're both saying. Um, I'm just wondering as a concept, if we're talking about the outcome is supporting additional funding for additional housing. And while it most likely will happen at 40 Prado, are we saying that this goal must be 40 Prado? I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
I, I think the outcome that I, that I think we're trying to articulate is that reduce the in, impacts or reduce the number of chronically homeless, uh, that are unable to obtain shelter. And I, I think that, that would be it. I think that's it.
Great.
Yeah, period.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Pease, did you have another item for housing and homelessness? Are we ready to move?
This is, well, I, it might be in, in between and it's not, nothing to type in the moment, Teresa. It's more of a question for, um, City Manager Johnson. So, um, we do need to, uh, update the objective design standards as part of the housing element. And there's some, um, nexus with updating the community design guidelines. At least it's specific to the housing and mixed use. I wasn't going to add that as a bullet point. It seems like that's going to get incorporated automatically. Similarly, there were some suggestions within, um, the advisory bodies that were super helpful. So I would imagine staff is going to go through, um, like mass transportation, uh, recommended staff to be able to, um, uh, pursue grant programs. Um, the parks and rec element, I'd imagine there's a priority list and we're going to kind of fold in those priorities. Dog parks, this and such facility, et cetera. Right? That will come through that process. And then dredging of Laguna Lake, it seems like we've already adopted a, an every year kind of plan for incremental dredging. So, um, no, I think that covers the, the last of my little, um, bullet points. Thank you.
Thank you. So on the, just to make sure if there's any outcomes that people wanted to state related to climate action, open spaces, sustainable transportation that we haven't already talked through, that might provide support to staff. Are there any final pieces there? We have a pretty outcome based goal statement. Councilmember Marks?
Uh, yeah, I would just like to add exploring, um, uh, programs to green residential yards and streets. It's called, there's a, a British, uh, program called Wild, Wilding Our Streets. But, um, uh, I, I believe, uh, City Manager has also looked into programs like that. So besides the urban forest, it's also utilizing our, um, you know, our medians and our, uh, and then incentivize in, in some way, uh, the use of, uh, our front lawns, uh, and our back lawns to, um, either garden vegetables or some kind of, um, drought tolerant, uh, vegetation that will again sequester, uh, Harmon.
Thank you. Mayor Harmon?
This would actually really be a program that the community would need to bring, but if, if there's any way that we could support, uh, it's called Cycling Without Age. It's a great, um, I just think that in general, if we can expand our, um, the, the conversation around cycling to make sure it's as expansive and inclusive as possible. And it often can get cast in a generational divide sort of conversation, which I think is problematic and, and doesn't need to be that way at all. And there is, there's a lot of different ways we could combat it, but just by way of example, there is an organization called Cycling Without Age that, um, it does, uh, does a lot for, um, getting seniors out, um, on bike paths and things like that. So I guess maybe the overarching thing is to, I mean, we already make it inclusive, but I feel like if we had a specific program or could help the community, um, with either some financial support, take on that project here. I think that that would go a long way to, um, just sort of changing what has at times unfortunately become a toxic intergenerational conversation around cycling specifically.
Thank you. So a component of that, of, of this piece of climate action, open space, sustainable transportation.
Yeah, the sustainable transportation piece specifically, but in, I mean, it, it's a big wellbeing, and I think wellbeing got dropped, but it is, um, it's a, it's a quality of life generator for sure.
Yeah. Okay. So we, at this point, what we have, um, made some, I think alignment, agreement on is that the city staff would be taking the opening vision statement, the four draft goal statements, do some final wordsmithing on that. Uh, those components, which Mayor Harmon, as you were just saying, if we took out that kind of opening clause on this one, there is some discussion about maybe we add all those back in so that there is some, you know, um, parallel structuring that's going on. So there'll be, we'll do some work on that piece. And then that would come back to you on the February 16th meeting agenda uh, to get overall alignment on these being adopted as the 21, 23 major city goals. Um, at this point, there would be four of them. And then some of these ideas that are highlighted here, then create, some are outcomes, some are very much more specific actions or tasks would be it would be taken into consideration as staff is building out the work programs for each of these major city goals. That work would be done over the course of the next, um, couple of months. And the plan is that on April 20th, that would come back to you, um, for presentation. Any questions? Yes. Councilmember Pease?
Thank you. Um, since the, I'm wondering how the, um, material that got presented today is going to get, be made available to the public, especially since we didn't do kind of a formal prioritizing. But I think seeing our goals verbatim and having that table, is that going to be part of the meeting minutes? Is that the way to do that? Okay.
So it's part of the administrative record. So it'll be part of the record that, and Teresa can help me here. It'll be part of what goes on the, on the packet for today. So if you go on the laser piece, you'll be able to find all these documents, including the memo that we sent, the additional materials that we distributed today. And then ultimately, um, the, as we mentioned earlier, we'll refine these and then they'll come to the council on the 16th. We're, we're, we're not intending to, um, issue a press release after today's work because we want to, we'll do that after the 16th, after the council actually takes action on the final goals and make sure that everyone is solid with the final language before we announce that. Nevertheless, yours, because of the process to deliver a full work program and budget by April 20th, we actually start the work on Tuesday. We, um, we round up virtually about 50 of us, um, to get together and we start going out. Kind of who's doing what. And so we'll start that work, uh, because I think we've got enough today that probably there won't be a significant enough shift on the 16th that we would get off course.
Thanks. Vice, Vice Mayor Stewart?
Just a little more clarification. Thank you. So around the packet we received today, with all of the many comments from the feedback from the community, will those all be kind of in this bullet section too, since people were just kind of throwing, getting against the wall? I can't.
My, my apologies. Teresa, perhaps what we can do is the minutes from today, we can attach this to the minutes. Um, and then what will come to the council on the 16th is really the goal statements. And then, uh, not necessarily all of these potent, kind of ideas.
Okay, cool. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I just want to echo that. So the, the bullets are more of the working, uh, working document for staff. The actual documentation would be that the four draft goal statements with an opening, uh, paragraph.
Okay. Let me just ask one more question. Sorry for all the clarification. Um, so the, all the topics that were brought in from the community then also goes into the staff consideration for the working programs?
When you say the community, I'm not, I'm, Councilmember Stewart, I'm not quite following you.
Yeah. So the packet we got today that, or not today, but for today, that had all of the comments from the surveys and, and everything we'd done out in the community with a community forum, will that also shape what the work programs will be?
Well, so the way that we, that this process is historically gone is that, um, council has now taken all of the points of input and developed the major city goals. And so there may be some ideas that we. And so there may be some ideas that we glean from, I think is Councilmember P's pointed out, from our advisory bodies. There may be ideas that come in the form of comments and the surveys or comments from the workshop. The, 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 the more overarching way we'll approach this is that because we're a very well planned community that has lots of policies, you have had, you know, on bicycles or on housing, because you have a whole housing element, those are the primary sources that we're going to pull ideas and, and, and actions on. We won't necessarily be coming up with new things unless there's just a glaring gap between what we know today and what we learned from the community. And so that'll be the, that'll be the thrust of the approach. Because I can tell, because I can tell you just alone with all the documents you've adopted in your general plan and your implementing documents, there's enough action items to get it, get it, strategies and steps to achieve the goals that you've articulated today.
Great, thank you.
And let me add just my experience, this is my fifth time through this. My experience is that what City Manager Johnson just said is generally true. But yes, if the community has provided an especially good idea that carries out a policy, a program, you know, a work goal, that will be used. I mean, believe me, but lots of times what people suggest are things that actually are already in our, in our policy documents, in our program and our, and our, and our plan. So it, it, you know, it's six of one, half a dozen of the other. But yeah, if there's some innovative thing, we haven't happened to mention it, but it fits in really well with what we're wanting as a goal, it, it definitely gets used. If that answers your question.
All right, well, I want to, I think we have a really clear path forward at this point for the work of the day. When I'd opened this up, I'd said, you know, our, our goal here was to walk out with some goal statements at, at least a 90% level, which is, I think we are well into that space at this point. And we'll do some refining, as I said, over the next, I guess, two weeks or week and a half, 10 days or so, to bring that to the city council on the 16th. And then work plans will follow from there. I just want to thank you before, if there's any final closing comments, I want to thank you for your participation and your lively discussion and dialogue in this. I know this is very challenging to do goal setting at all in the first place, to kind of get to this alignment. But to do it in a virtual setting is extremely, has an added element of, of challenge. And so I really appreciate your openness to that and your hanging in there and respect to hear each other and to take turns in that. And Vice Mayor Stewart, thank you for consistently calling you council member. And then I finally got it right at the end there. So I appreciate your graciousness with that. And with that, if there are any final comments? Anybody before we close? Councilmember Marks?
I just want to say job well done. I think we all really were very frank and, and open and consistent. And I wanted to thank Summer for facilitating this. I think it, it actually, yeah, yeah, it actually worked. When I first looked at the timeline, I thought, oh yeah, great, let's see if we can do it. But we did it, so thank you.
Forty-five minutes over time, but you all, you did good. Mayor Harmon, would you like to adjourn us officially?
Sure. Thank you, everybody, and thank you to staff. I see still all, all the key staff members are on the line, hanging in here with us. Quiet and important behind the scenes. So thank you so much, everybody. Yes, thank you to you, Summer, and my colleagues. Thank you to Christine Dietrich, who I only heard briefly, but I know is out there making sure that we don't do.
That's a good day for the council mayor.
That we don't get into trouble, which I very much appreciate. And last but certainly not least, Derek, honestly, where would we be without you? Seriously, I can't think of, I know, I get super emotional talking about Derek. He's like, I just, I just cannot express how much, I know, I personally, I'm sure my colleagues as well, but you know how much this community appreciates you, even though a, a large swath of them don't know who you are, probably. They nevertheless going about their everyday lives here in, in light of historic circumstances, relatively unscathed, all things considered, thanks to this, this council, the staff and, and to you and your leadership, Derek. So thank you so much for that. And enjoy the rest of your weekend, everyone. And we will see you, not this, but next Tuesday at our regularly scheduled city council meeting. Nina adjourned.
So much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Summer. Thanks, Derek. Thanks.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.